Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this evening's meeting to order from the Eileen Dondara Foley Council Chambers for Monday, May 19th, 2008, and I'd like to ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Farini.
Here.
Assistant Mayor Blaylock.
Here.
Councilor Noveline Clayburg.
Here.
Councilor Dewire.
Here.
Councilor Smith.
Here.
Councilor Kennedy.
Here.
Councilor Spear.
Here.
Councilor Reynolds.
Here.
Councilor Panalakis.
Yeah.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask you to rise. I'd like to ask Councilor Smith to lead us in the pleasure allegiance, and before we do that, I'd just like to say, could we observe a moment of silence in memory of Harold Decker?
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yep. First order of business on our agenda is presentations. We have a few different ones this evening, and at this time, it's number two on your agenda, but we're going to know to recognize Dr. Mitch Shuldman and Dr. Robert Lister regarding the status of the Portsmouth Middle School Project. He's going to make a brief presentation as he has previously done. I would just remind my fellow councilors that apparently they are involved in union negotiations as we speak.
As we speak.
In a meeting currently, and they're taking time out of that now to offer their report. Dr. Shuldman.
Thank you, as promised. Mr. Mayor, City Council, just a quick update. We're kind of in between things, as Ann Walker just said to me. If we had this meeting after tomorrow night, I would have had a lot more to say because we have a meeting tomorrow night, a work session. But since we last were here, there were two, I believe, community presentations, workshops that were held to talk about the school program. I would actually direct everyone's attention to the middle school database on the middle school website because there's some, all of the PowerPoint presentations that J C J Architects and Distefano Architects used, both at the public workshops and also the PowerPoint presentation which they presented to the school board last week. Tremendous amount of information is on there as PDF, so I would direct everyone's attention there. Tomorrow night, the school board is having a work session with J C J Architects, going to be in the Little Harbor Boardroom. Unfortunately, City Council chambers are used tomorrow. And we've had a request, I think what we're going to try to do, because it's a small space, is see if we can actually get it videotaped and have that videotape converted over to a DVD and maybe made available in the, I don't know who would do that, but make it available somewhere in the public library or, you know, so if people who can't attend still want to be able to watch and see, they can do that. And then the following week, May 27th, is actually the evening that the school board will have a vote on some very crucial issues, specifically where we're going to direct the architects to look at in terms of the site that they're choosing and the size of the building we're going to have them consider designing. So that's May 27th. So tomorrow night, the 20th is a work session, and the 27th, and then following up that is in June, is the second set of community workshops that J C J will put on, June 9th and June 10th, and that's going to be more conversations about schematic designs and where they are at that point. They'll have some pictures and drawings.
Thank you, Dr. Shuldman. Questions for Mitch?
Councilor Spear.
I guess this is more of a question for the council and the city manager. Is it, I think the conflict tomorrow night is the Board of Adjustment in this room.
Yes.
Is it possible for the Board of Adjustment to meet this time in conference room A, or I don't know what the policies are on that, but that way it can be televised live here.
I don't know if the conference room A is available.
I don't, we don't know.
Okay.
That's kind of late in the game.
Size of the agenda.
You know, let me just say, counselor, we've always tried to accommodate, and it might be because there's a large hearing in here tomorrow night. We don't know, but we've always, wherever possible, Board of Adjustment, Historic District Commission has always been very accommodating to move their meetings.
Okay.
And I would agree. Will you do that for us, and we appreciate that?
Council, Councilor Reynolds and Councilor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the evening of the two sessions and my compliments to everyone involved. Great, great event, great presentation by J C J and a lot of good community participation. You referenced another presentation that J C J made to the school board and also posted on the database. Is there more, would you say? Is it sort of quantitatively or qualitatively more?
Yes.
More detailed?
Oh, yes. Absolutely.
Okay, than what was presented that night?
Yes.
So, okay.
Substantially more.
So worth a.
Has lots of pictures of other works that they've done as well, and yes.
Great. Okay.
Councilor Kennedy.
This is kind of a question for the city manager. Do you think we could put the broadcast on the city website of tomorrow night's meeting, and also maybe the more intense vision of...
Sure.
It is on. The other one is on.
The other, all the, all the meetings that have taken place in this room.
No, I realize that, but then the.
I'll check. I don't know technically if we can do it, but I'll check.
Yeah.
Sure. Good idea.
If I could just, just chime in on that for a second, because I, you know, technology-wise, it's not a problem. The issue really is going to end up being audio quality, just so you know.
Audio quality?
Audio quality.
Audio.
As to whether people will be able to hear very well all the conversations. That's the only issue. Speaking as a technologist.
Noted. Councilor Clayburg.
I had the opportunity to go to the evening meeting, and I thought it was excellent. There was a lot of involvement. What I was particularly impressed with was the number of elementary parents of elementary-aged children and parents of current middle-aged students. I, that's a sector of the community that I hadn't seen before. So I applaud Dr. Lister. I know we all got emails, us parents of kids in the schools, we all got emails alerting us to the meeting, and I think that really worked because we certainly saw a new group of people that I had never seen before. So, and they all, many of them came up to the podium and spoke, so I think their words were very valuable, and, you know, they're going to be the future parents of, of the middle school students. So I thought it was wonderful that so many of them came. So I, I think the community workshops are working because it's bringing out that group of people that, you know, we haven't seen before. So thank you, school board, school administration, for, you know, putting this all together. I think the process is going extremely well, and I applaud all of you for working so hard on that.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Noveline Clayburg. Any further questions for the chairman of the school board or for Dr. Lister? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. See you next month.
Take care. At this time, we're going to move to item three under presentations. We do expect Senator Martha Fullack later regarding House Bill 1645, the retirement bill, but at this time, we'll move to the presentation of overtime tracking report for police, fire, and public works, and I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Ron. There was a request for the city council to receive a update on the, the tracking of overtime reports as was part of the matrix study which was done in 2006. What we've done is put together some information that we utilize. It's not all, there's, there's a lot more information which the police chief, fire chief, and public works director will talk about, but I'm going to pass down some of the information as relates to the specific section of the matrix report that we were going to be talking about, and that deals with overtime monitoring and reporting. And I would ask that the police chief get started basically going in the order that were listed here on the, the agenda. But what you're receiving now is page seven of the matrix report, which specifically talks about overtime monitoring and reporting, talks about overtime by cause, overtime as a percent of salary, overtime hours per employee, year-to-date overtime expenditures, overtime hours and leave use, overtime reduction, compensatory time earned, time used, and time accrued. And what we did is we provided you with, for each department, some of the macro view of the, of what we can pull off the system, and each of the departments will be talking about some of their individual tracking that they do. Let me just quickly go through what you have in front of you. We have an attachment with overtime by cause. We, in addition, we have an overtime as a percentage of full-time salaries. We have also, well, leave days used by department. This is the comp time and leave days used to date by department. So we have that information available along with the comp time accrued in 2007 and 2008. And each department head, as they get up to talk about how they track overtime, will may or may not refer to each of these, but I think the information that's provided gives you a full understanding of pretty much 97% of the overtime in the city is really in the area of fire, police, and public works. So with that, I'd ask the police chief to begin. Chief?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Farini. City councilors, city manager. As the manager just pointed out to you, the first package you have here is pentimation documents. I have a second package that's specific to the police department. If you don't mind, I'd like to ask Captain Ferrell to bring them forward.
And this also would come off the pentimation program. Is that correct, chief?
The, the raw data comes from pentimation. That's correct. I'm going to talk a little bit about that. The second page of the report that the manager handed out is specific to the police department. And you can see that pentimation here allows us to categorize or track our overtime by 18 different categories. For example, the first item, the first line is Detective B I S overtime, which is overtime for all of our detective division. And then right under that, you see family services overtime, which allows us to take a look at our overtime for family services, which is basically a subset of our detective division. And then the next one is patrol general overtime, which is overtime for our patrol division. Moving over to the right, the different columns, you'll see that it has a column for our budgeted for FY07. FY07, it shows our expenditures. In the next column, it shows what we budgeted for fiscal year '08 and for year-to-date, what our expenditures are up until the month of April, and then it shows what we budgeted for fiscal year '09. Police Department has historically tracked our overtime in pretty minute detail. We track it by division, by department, by program. We track it by case number, by employee. We have something like 65 different codes that we use in order to track our overtime. So when we went to pentimation, we wanted to be able to preserve what we were doing, and fortunately, the city, working with Seacoast Computer, was able to come up with a program called PORP, which allows the police department to drill down a little bit deeper into pentimation and come up with some reports that are specific to the police department. Primary causes or the drivers for overtime in the police department, of course, are staffing, which is, a lot of it is governed by contracts, and then, of course, crime and disorder. For example, our employees are entitled to vacation time, compensatory time. They get personal days. They get sick leave. They may be out on injured leave. They're entitled to funeral leave, and then they may be, we may have to replace them if they've gone to training or if they're at court as well. We have minimum staffing guidelines for our patrol division that we use, and they're guidelines for our supervisors. They're not contractual. But each shift in patrol has something that's called a TBA. It's a to-be-announced. It's a term that we've used since I was here as a patrol officer, and that's basically an unassigned officer. He or she might come to work on a Thursday evening and find out that the officer who was assigned to work the downtown beat is called out sick, and they're going to be on a bicycle downtown. They may very well come to work and find out that officer was injured the night before, and now their remainder of the time for that shift for the next six weeks or two months, they might be assigned to that downtown beat. So we don't hire hour for hour when somebody is out. In B I S and our detective division, we're staffed seven days a week, including holidays, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. primarily, and this changes in the summertime when it gets a little bit busier and our school resource officers are not involved with the schools. We'll have them involved in patrolling the downtown area, doing alcohol compliance checks, bar checks, assorted different assignments. Also with B I S, because they're entitled to, or they get special detail pay, we have some flexibility in their hours, so we can reassign them to work an evening shift. Let's say we had an investigation that primarily we had to do during the night shift, or if we had a spate of burglaries and we're doing surveillances, we can reassign them as well to a midnight shift and not invoke overtime. We have a number of controls that are in place. One primarily is that nobody can authorize their own overtime. In other words, if an officer needs overtime, he or she needs to go to their supervisor. They cannot authorize it. If a sergeant or a lieutenant has a project or something that he or she might have to do, working on a special event, they have to go to their supervisor. They cannot authorize their own overtime, all the way up to the deputy chief, who doesn't get overtime, so we work him like a dog most days, but anyway. So all overtime has to be authorized by a supervisor, and it is then documented with an overtime slip, which you have here with all the different codes in front of you. And that overtime slip also needs to be approved by a supervisor. So if an officer or any employees work in overtime, they have to get it authorized by their supervisor. They then have to turn in their slip to their supervisor, who then signs off on it. The slip is a control tool. All overtime, all these slips are reviewed by the administrative captain. The deputy chief and myself audit overtime by looking at these slips, and then we'll take a look at the reason that the overtime was worked. Say if it's a case investigation, we'll actually call up the investigation and take a look and see why it involved overtime. We have monthly reports, some of which you have an example in that packet. We have overtime. We track it again by shift, by division, by case number. They're reviewed on a monthly basis. The police commission also reviews our budget and in turn reviews our overtime expenditures. I have a weekly meeting, and every week, I start out that meeting with my staff, talking about our budget, where we are year-to-date, and talking about overtime. You have a number of reports in front of you. This one here shows our overtime for the department in its entirety, and you can see that we're tracking lower than we were in fiscal year '07 and fiscal year '06. The next one is our patrol division, and this is an overall report, but we, we break this report out by shift as well, so we can look at our overtime for our day shift, for our evening shift, for our midnight shift. And if, say, our midnight shift is tracking higher than what it was last year, we can take a look, drill down a little bit further and see why. It may very well be that we have an officer who's out on FMLA or an officer that's out on injured. We can then take a look at our other shifts and see if it's possible to reassign or redeploy an officer, say, from a day shift and evening shift to the midnight shift to cover that vacancy. We do that with our ranking officers as well. Your next report you have is for the family services section, and you can see that's tracking a little, is tracking lower than fiscal year '07. And again, I should mention, I should point out that we track our overtime not just by dollars, but we track it by hours as well, because we believe that gives us a better comparison from year to year. Overtime pay, pay fluctuates. Employees go up by steps. It can increase by color, so a better way to track our overtime is by hours. And then the next report you have is, just shows a little bit more detail, and that's a report for our B I S detective division. And you can see that, if you look at the chart down below, you can see that our overtime in that division is tracking higher than where it should be. So the next question would be why. You take a look at above, and you can see that primarily it's due to case investigations with, it's not unusual that when the economy tanks, that things get busy for us, and we've been very busy at the police department. April in and of itself was a very busy month. As you, if you can take a look over the two left-hand columns, April '07 and April '08, you take a look at the hours, you can see that we had a very busy month in the month of April. We had a number of suicides, suspicious deaths, stolen vehicles, burglaries. We had non-brobery that we investigated that month as well. And then backing up to the pentimation report, as the city manager stated, your next page is basically shows you the percentage of our overtime as to, compared to our salary accounts. And you can see that last year, we're at 13.9, yeah, 13.9%. This year, we're at 12.25. Our four-year hysterical, historical average has been 12.3, and you can see down in the box in the lower left-hand corner, budgeting for next year, we're at 11.54%. And then finally, your last two pages have to do with the use of leave, and most of this is governed by our contracts with our employees. As I mentioned, we don't replace hour for hour, for example, in our patrol division. Last year, in terms of sick leave, we only replaced for 32% of that leave that was used. For annual leave, we only replaced for 17%. Personal days was zero. Comp time was zero. Injured leave was 12%.
I think that pretty much concludes my part of the presentation. Questions for the chief before we move on to fire. Councilor Kennedy.
When we were talking about this at the public hearing, one of our citizens came forward and talked about cross-training between fire and policemen in other parts of the United States are doing that. And so I did a research on Sunday, yesterday, and found that it is true. Some places are doing cross-training between two departments to save money. What are your feelings on that, and what do you think about it?
I'll be right up front and frank. I think it's two different occupations. It's two different professions, and I really don't, I really don't see, I really don't see the benefit in it. And my understanding is that a lot of departments that went towards having a public safety agency are now looking to break away and go back to police and fire. The, I think just the training requirements alone for, to train one person in the fire industry and the police industry would be overwhelming.
Okay. And my second, can I?
Sure.
My second question is, you might not know this, but as you know, I work in a public school, and we hire substitutes to come in for teachers. And my question is, could it work that we brought in, say we hired two people full-time to work the different shifts? And if someone was out, they would just take it up that position? Because for 500, I think it's 530,000, that's a lot of money. And I was thinking, I guess what I'm looking for is another way to do it. So is there a way we could hire people that, like, would just come in and do a, and be available to fill in?
So if you're asking me, I, so I understand the question. Could we hire somebody part-time to come in and fill those shifts?
No, I mean, you have someone on the payroll. You have no overtime. You have someone on the payroll, so if someone's out, they would automatically go into that position.
We've talked about doing something similar with dispatch, if I'm following you, and again, part of the problem comes in with, in with the training as well, keeping that person up to snuff. So you incur a cost, a residual cost, every month to ensure that they're trained and ready to go, or even having to deploy them out there on the street so that they keep current with what's going on.
I think, I think what Councilor Kennedy is going to ask is like a floater-type situation, full-time person that would float with shifts.
Well, I mean, to some extent, we do that with TBAs. Each shift has their own TBA, and they are the floaters, so to speak. So if somebody is out sick or injured, then they fill in for that assignment. So if somebody is out, sick or injured, then they fill in for that assignment.
Okay, and then I'm missing overtime. If they're filling in, and you already hired them to fill in for that assignment, and then if, also your school resource officers, which I deal with a lot, I know they work for departments in the summer. So why do we have overtime if that's happening?
Well, I mean, it can't cover every extended sheet, everything that goes on. In other words, it may very well be that I have one TBA for a shift, and I have two officers who are out, then I may very well need to fill that beat on an overtime basis. It may be for case investigation, an officer may investigate an assault and end up having to stay over an hour or two hours to finish that investigation. I mean, I guess I would, you know, I guess I would remind you that our, our overtime to replace is, I think, pretty low. And also, again, one of the things the matrix pointed out is when they did their comparative study, I believe we were something like 30% lower than any of the other cities or towns that they looked at. I mean, we're 24/7 operation, police and dispatch. There's no way we're gonna get away from having some overtime. What we try to do is make sure that we use it responsibly and keep it down to its lowest possible levels.
Councilor Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question, chief, regarding the, well, when we have special events in the city, of which we have many, Market Square Day, Portsmouth Criterion, Portsmouth Peace Treaty Parade, and for the most part, our practice as a city is to bill the events, the event sponsors for the, I believe what we do as a city is we, you know, we get an application for a special event, we make an assessment of the police and the public works forces that are, you know, resources that are gonna be necessary to conduct that event safely, and then we bill those sponsoring organizations, for the most part, for the costs. Does that, one, is that the police that are used for those events, does that go down as overtime? Do they get paid at the overtime rate? And that's fine if they, you know, because it's, it is overtime, and if we're billing out for it, that's fine. And two, does that show up here, and does that in any way kind of inflate the overtime number? You know, there's a looks, people say, oh, the police can know this overtime. Well, we're a city that has a lot of special events. And so, out of the 530,000, is that number in here?
To answer your question, technically, no. Two different, two different types of pay, outside work and overtime.
Detail?
Detail work, that's correct. What we do, though, is we try to work with the nonprofit of the agency that is putting on the event, to try to keep their costs as low as possible.
Yeah, and, and I'll testify that, you know, having, the first time we did the Portsmouth Criterion, there was, they did work with us, and, and we-
And depending, we'll take a look at that shift, say, if it's a road race or a bicycle race, like you just mentioned, and if it's possible, if we have on-duty resources, if we have a TBA that, that, that day, we may very well reassign them to, to help out and work the event. And what it'll do is, it'll impact employee leave, because the shift commander will make a note right on the work roster. No, you know, no, no annual, no personal days, no comp time.
No leave on Market Square?
Right, exactly.
Yeah. I just see the first two items are debt, this overtime, and debt fam serve overtime for 87,000. Are those detailed? Does that, debt stand for detail, or?
That's detective.
Detective, sorry, okay. So no, so the detail work is not part of the 530?
That's, that's correct.
Even though it would be revenue, and then it would be spending. I was just trying to, okay.
That's correct.
Thanks.
Further questions, Councilor Dwyer?
I noticed that when we look at '07 to '08 to what you project to '09, the percentage of salaries has decreased about three-quarters of a percent or so each year. And from what you said, we can't really, we can't really do one-to-one with hours, but is it, is that approximately, you know, a decrease in about 1% total hours, or three-quarters of a percent, by the kind of management strategies that you've been talking about? Is that a way to think about it?
I, yes, approximately. I think that's a good way to, to look at it.
And, and I guess, so my question would be, it seems like a no-brainer, but I'd like to ask it. Do you attribute the strategies that you've talked to us about to that percent reduction? And if so, how much lower can it go, or have you about reached the percent reduction through management strategies for FY '09 that you think you can? Do you know what I'm asking?
I do know what you're asking. I'm not sure how to answer the question without getting into contractual issues that are ongoing.
Exactly. I mean, well, I guess that, that would be my question, beyond contract, upsetting contractual aside, because I understand those would be the ways to, to-
Then I would say we're at the end of our rope. We're at the end of the line. But there are some contractual avenues, mechanisms that we're looking at right now that could result in savings.
No further questions for the chief this time? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
And recognize the fire department, Chief Leclair.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. On the fire department overtime, on the overtime by cause report you have in front of you, just to explain some of the categories, fiscal year firefighter overtime, emergency recall, even though it says firefighter, it's the entire staff, all 56-floor personnel. Emergency recall is calling off duty people back for fires, other emergencies. That category also includes vacancies due to retirements, military leave assignments, et cetera. We are the department that has, in the last contract negotiations, gone to an earned time program, so we really don't have annual and sick. We have earned time. Firefighter earned time coverage, which is all that combined, is your second line. Firefighter OT disability coverage, some of their days that they don't use go into disability, and if they do injured, or to say, they get sick or have surgery, they do require, are required to take three of their earned time days before they get into their disability coverage. We have a line for workers' comp coverage, if somebody's out injured on, in a line of duty, backfilling their position is in that line. And we broke out firefighter OT education and training for all classes, all off-site training that we conduct. We do have the same checks and balances as far as filling out leave slips and being signed by supervisor, and all overtime is then tracked by both our front office and the resources department in City Hall. Our operation is fairly simple. We don't have enough people on shift to staff the way we should be staffed, never mind extra people. So if someone is out, we fill it. If you recall, in last year's budget, we have 14 personnel assigned per shift, and for years, we always filled that person-for-person coverage on the night shift to keep 14, which effectively kept four people at Station 2. With this, and we went down to 13 minimum manning during the day. With this year's budget, overtime's been reduced dramatically, and due to other costs in the budget, and there will only be 13 firefighters, day and night, meaning three firefighters at Station 2, for total, for all of this next fiscal year. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions for the chief? Councilor Kennedy?
I'm gonna ask you the same question about cross-training. We had someone come and talk to us about cross-training. What are your feelings on cross-training between the police department and yours?
I can echo the answer of the police chief and say that it's unworkable, and I do know some of the departments that have gone to that are getting away from it, because with all the requirements that we have on all of our personnel, and all the education requirements we have on the police side, and I can speak to this, because I did five years in law enforcement while, as a firefighter in the seacoast area, and as training got more intense and I started getting promoted up, it's just impossible to do both and do them well. So I certainly would not endorse that in any way, and I think I've publicly stated that on a number of occasions.
Could you maybe give us some examples at some point, and not tonight, I understand that, of places that are switching back from going, from cross-training?
Well, I think that the, like you said, you did research, the research is out there for those departments that, that are switching back or going to it. But I will just say that I'm certainly not in favor of it.
And then the other thing is about substitutes, hiring people per shift to substitute for people that are out upfront, instead of doing overtime.
Well, again, the, the, you still have extra employees, base salary plus benefits and health insurance for anybody that you hired. We do have collective bargaining agreements that dictate what shifts they work and how the purse, the firefighters, officers are, hours are assigned. So without getting too much in collective bargaining in it, it's not possible this time.
Is there, can you say, without getting in collective bargaining, that you have one person out per shift usually?
I would say at least.
Okay, what's, do you have an idea of what you normally have out?
It's average about two and a half per people a day.
Is that per shift or per day?
Per shift.
So you have two and a half individuals out every, for the most part, per shift?
That's the average, year-on.
Councilor Reynolds?
Chief, thanks, thanks for your, your answers here and for all the information that you provided, that you are providing. I just want to follow up on the topic of the, you know, budgeted overtime, planned staffing, et cetera. You said a few minutes ago that we've made the policy decision, apparently, to go to 13 firefighters around the clock, whereas we used to go, we used to have 14 at night. We, we did that via overtime?
We did that by overtime, we did it by council directive and commission directive, and this year, we went down to 13 at night as a mere necessity, as you saw from the first budget. To stay at the current operation of 14 at night would be about a 9.3% increase in the budget.
Okay. Well, and, but you said in your remarks, that you said, and so overtime's been reduced dramatically, but if I look at the figures here on overtime as a percentage of full-time salaries, and I track from budgeted FY '07 overtime, the numerical, you know, the figure, the actual figure and the percentage of salaries, it was 20.37% of salaries in FY '07, it was 23.2, in actual, it was 20.37% is budgeted, it was 23% actual in FY '07. In FY '08, it was 19.24% budgeted, 20.37% actual. Here in '09, we're budgeting actually, it shows 760,024% of salaries budgeted for FY[1363.14][1363.14]'09. Am I, am I, if I'm reading that correctly, it looks like we're going up in the amount of overtime as a percent of salaries. Now, I realize there's two numbers there, and so it could be getting bigger as a percentage, but smaller in actuality, but help us understand.
Couple of points on that. To go from the 9.3% to the 5.1 that we ended up with, all of that's overtime dollars. All of that is staffing. All of that is that fourth firefighter at Station 2.
Saying the 9.1 is where you started with your budget?
It's actually around 9.7. By the time the insurance came in, a little less, and things were adjusted, that's where it was. I don't know what the final budget is, and with the $23,000 of the night, I don't know where the final fire department budget, let's say around 5%. So all that difference is overtime.
Okay.
One of the things that I've stated to the manager, and I've stated to the council on several occasions, is that I, as your fire chief, will never recommend to you that we go less than 13 people. So in order to, with 14 firefighters at night, if we ran out of money in the budget or had to come in at zero, and we haven't overspent our budget since I've been chief, was to play with that night shift staffing. That was our cushion. Now, there is no cushion. So the overtime dollars are allotted in the next fiscal year's budget to guarantee the best that we can. This is barring large fires, rash evarts, and things that go on. As, as the police chief said, we expect our activity to increase as the economy decreases. That's how it goes. And that's budget recommend, reflects the amount overtime necessary to keep 13 people on-duty 24 hours a day.
Councilor Spear, and then the assistant mayor?
If everyone reports to work, you would have 14 people per shift? Correct. Okay, so by going to 13, it allows one person to take leave without filling it in. And I guess, kind of what Councilor Kennedy's been talking about, if we average about two and a half people taking leave every shift, if we had 15 people on shift with a minimum of 13, you would see a dramatic reduction in overtime, but you'd incur the long-term costs of hiring those four extra firefighters. Does that sum up what that is?
Yeah. Council, I've been in the fire service for 22 years, and every year, overtime comes up as a dirty word. And as I make the analogy all the time, the manager at Walmart will make more money if he doesn't open those lanes. That's why you wait, 12, 13, 14 people deep. I don't have that luxury. If the seat is empty, I have to fill it. We're 24/7 operation, three stations, about 5,000 to 6,000 calls a year. So if someone's out, we fill. If you, and that's what we talked about last time, if you want to hire people merely to cover vacations and sick time, and I will tell you, it's cheaper to pay the overtime than it is to pay salaries, benefits, health insurance, family plans, married, kids. You'd have to hire them multiples of four, no matter which way you look at it. To think that you're gonna hire somebody full-time and say, you know what, your job is to work whenever we tell you. We're a union fire department, and that will never fly. In any contract negotiations, it's dead arrival, it won't, it won't happen. Even if you did hire somebody for the day or the night shift, you didn't need two. They'd have to have some time off, so there's two day, two night, it's four anyway. So if you're gonna hire firefighters to cover vacations and sick leave, you might as well hire them per shift, the way they go, the way they normally operate, according to the contract. So then, like I said, if you want to hire and put 18 firefighters on a shift and don't fill until you get to 14, I'm all for it. It's a tremendous amount of money. Every four firefighters we hire is about $280,000. And if you look at the penimation report, not, not pieces of it, we've looked at the whole thing, you'll see the penimation reports, the fire department's overtime, 11% of budget. Industry norm is 10%, so I don't think we're doing anything wrong. And as stated in the matrix report, all of the city's overtime accounts were in line.
Counselor, well, it's the assistant mayor, then Councilor Reynolds?
You might, might ask more of a comment than a question. I wanted to thank Chief Magnet and Chief Leclair for tonight's presentation. I feel that they, they have certainly a thorough understanding of their overtime. Also, there's a, what I believe is a, somewhat of a misconception, that we have a lot of overpaid police officers and fire, fire personnel. And I don't share that. I think the city has evidenced, well, by events here the other night, by the fact that we have one of the safest cities that I have ever walked through. When you, we ask an awful lot of our firefighters, we ask an awful lot of our police officers, and to have a well-paid police force and a well-paid fire personnel is not, is not a bad thing. Something to be proud of, the fact that, you know, our job as councils is to watch the expenses overall, keep the tax rate as low as possible, but also to provide excellent services. And sometimes that costs money. I, I run a business that also has to pay overtime for the same similar reasons that these two gentlemen are presenting us tonight, so I'm, I'm aware of that, and I'm aware of also that when you have people that do a very good job, and they do such a good job that you need to ask them to do extra, and they get paid a little extra for it, and they're well-paid and proud of what they do, it's a good thing, we all win. And that's really all I had to say.
Thank you. Councilor Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, before I ask my question, I, I would like to echo Councilor Blalock, Assistant Mayor Blalock's comments. You know, we do have an excellent police and fire department, and we have great protection, and it's reflected in the statistics here in the city. Again, ratings, like, things like safest places to live. I have personally been the beneficiary of some excellent police work, been a victim of some minor crimes, and, and experienced the professionalism that we have, and of course, I've never had a fire, but confident that the same, the same kind of thing would occur. And I agree that it's a, it's a sort of a testament to our, the quality of our community that we're willing to pay for that and invest in that. But I, but I also believe, you know, there's an impression out there, there's whatever, there's, our constituents say, this and that. So it's our job here to ask the questions, make sure we ask the question and we got an answer that explains it, so that people then understand it. So I'm gonna ask this one. You said, chief, that, okay, if we wanted to decrease the amount of overtime, I mean, overtime as a percentage of salary, almost a quarter, so it's a big number, but you've stated why. And you say, well, if we were gonna hire more firefighters and pay less overtime, you gotta hire them in multiples of four. You said four costs about $280,000. What if we said to you tonight, just, instead of budgeting 760,000 in- What if we said to you tonight, just instead of budgeting 760,000 in overtime for FYO nine, what if we said to you, let's hire four more firefighters, let's put 280,000 in the budget for that and let's decrease the budgeted overtime by 280 or 300 or something, there's a savings. Would that work? Why wouldn't that? Help us understand why that's not a good idea.
Again, without getting too far into the contracts, we, we operate under two different contracts. The firefighters have their contract, the firefighters have their contract.
Okay.
And through negotiations last time, they have slightly different bennies. So firefighters, if we have to cut overtime, if we have to balance the budget and understand that every year that we come in and argue and I say 5%, you say 2%, we land somewhere in the middle, it gets trimmed off overtime.
Yeah.
So eventually you keep shaving it off, you have to straighten it out. The firefighters are where we balance it. So we may have less firefighters, but if the station is open, there has to be an officer in it. There has to be a Capitol Lieutenant there. So that overtime is not anything I can do anything about. So, and it's all in one big overtime number. So if you can't take a big chunk off of overtime and win because you're going to affect the other side where I have very little leeway, actually none at all.
Why do you, and why do you have little leeway? Because?
If a station is open, there has to be a supervisor in it.
Okay. All right.
Just, is that because of an ordinance or collective bargaining agreement?
Collective bargaining.
All right. Okay. But that's, we keep coming back to that, don't we, the high leverage place?
Well, think about it. Would you want a fire station open without a fire officer in it?
No.
I don't.
Of course not.
So that's where that comes from.
Counselor Dwyer?
To what do you attribute the large decrease in the earned time coverage dollar overtime between FYO seven and FYO eight? Is that that we haven't seen all of '08 yet or were there some management strategies that made that happen?
Like I said, one of the things that we balance is the fourteenth firefighter at night. And we're constantly doing budget updates. As you know, I have one person that does all of the work, the executive assistant is, does the budgets as well and tracks it every month for the commission. And if we see that we're going to go over budget, we start trimming off firefighters. It's a reality.
So that's what you were, that's what you were doing differently in '08 than '07 and that's why there's that big difference?
We've been trimming that fourteenth firefighter back at night for, for a number of, of years. And it seems every year we have to trim back a little further and further because every time we come in for a budget to the council and we present a realistic budget to fund the fire department the next year, we end up with less than what we came in with. And again, that's where it comes off, it comes off of staffing. 95% of the budget is staffing. If this cuts to the budget, this cuts in staffing. I certainly can't stop fuel or heating oil, electricity. Those are things that I have very little effect on. And one of the things that, that you can see in my budget is I don't have the slush account. I don't have that fluff where I can make it up. If there's a cut, it's, it's personnel. If there's a cut in the budget, it's overtime. Retirement goes up, health insurance goes up. In order to make it so we can come in at a budget where nobody, none of you are screaming at us, it's coming off of overtime and that's staffing.
I certainly conceptually understand that, but then I'm looking at the numbers and I see that in FYO seven, the actual bottom line actually suggests that since it was, you know, $84,000 more than budgeted, that that wasn't happening and that there was something different happening in FYO eight.
Are you looking at earned time?
I'm looking at the, I'm looking at both the earned time as it relates to the difference between what happened in FYO seven and what happened in FYO eight. And then I'm also looking at the bottom line because I assume that what you're controlling is your bottom line by making your adjustments.
Correct. It's a bottom line budget and the whole idea is to, to not come in over budget. If you recall, last year we came in for a $50,000 contingency to make it with overtime and we ended up not needing it due to some, some management strategies. But if you look at the first page on earned time, '07 budgeted was 390, actual was 426. Fiscal year '08 budgeted was back to 390. We know we're going to spend more than 390. But again, that's where the, we balance the budget. That's where the budget requests to meet your needs come in to make budget.
So I guess, my first question, is 318 a year-to-date or is it an estimated fiscal year for that category? Your FYO eight actual, is that a year-to-date April?
That's, that is a year-to-date.
That's a year-to-date April.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I'll tell you, Counselor Kennedy has been waiting patiently, but she's asked questions so far on this and we'll get to you. I want first time counselors, Counselor Pendelakis on this.
Yeah, I think that the overtime, that we really can't question too much about it because they really don't know when a crime is going to be committed or a big fire is going to happen or we're going to have a big snowstorm. And I just, since I've sat on the council, I've watched them work very hard on that and try to hold the line on it. And I don't think the taxpayers would want to be able to have to wait for a police officer come. I know when I had an incident, there was five things going on at one time. So I think we need to keep an eye on it, but not to put them on the hot seat and tell us every move they're making to do it.
Counselor Novlin Clayberg, then Counselor Kennedy.
I, being a new counselor, I asked the chief if I could go talk to him a couple of weeks ago and I spent a few hours with him and thank you for letting me do that. And I think what was eye-opening for me is, for instance, there was a firefighter who had been injured several months ago on the job and hasn't been able to work since. So you have him doing some light work around the station. And I think, you know, I never thought of that before. I never thought that there were people that, firefighters that, you know, get injured and for whatever reason, they can't do their regular job. And I guess maybe the, sometimes in the public, we don't remember that those incidents happen and, and people become disabled temporarily so they can't work. So something like that drives costs up. And I remember I asked you if you had studied other cities and towns and how they do their fire. And I, I was particularly impressed with the research that you've done to try to make it different or, or see what other communities do. And I felt confident that, that you're, you're running an efficient operation. And I, I asked the question about should we hire more firefighters instead of paying the overtime? And, you know, you explained the whole situation where it would have to be four people. So I, I applaud you for what you've done in, in the commission. And I guess I, again, I'm a newcomer, but I don't, I don't see, I, I think you're running it efficiently.
Thank you. Couple of points on that. And we've tried to do corrections as we go. And since I took over, there's a lot of policies in place to try to limit our exposure to that. A normal routine for fire departments in the Seacoast, if their piece goes out, mutual aid or the ambulance is actually going to transfer the hospital, they call back and bring people to cover those positions. We don't do that. If we go mutual aid to middle of the town, we wait to see if we're going to be committed there for an extended period of time before we call in people. You know, having the staffing on that we do allows us that flexibility to do that. Some of the things that affected us, we had three vacancies this year due to retirements. That affects overtime. Three-month military leave assignment to Iraq, that affects overtime. Eight fires requiring callbacks for coverage, 15 mutual aid calls, weather and storm callbacks. As you know, this was quite the winter we had. And when there's storm coverage, rather than affect response times and not being able to get somewhere in a timely fashion, we put on storm coverage. And that's not another whole shift or six people. What we do is we go up to 15. And what that does is puts an engine and ambulance in each station. And as I've said to the council a number of years, that's what I want to get to is 15 people all the time. But unless you give me enough overtime to keep them there, I haven't gained anything operationally. So that's overtime. Coverage for funerals, union leave, other participation in drills. As you know, we're the, we're the, one of the leaders for the regional hazmat team and all that overtime is reimbursed. We're also the regional leader for the maritime incident emergency response. So all that, you know, affects overtime.
Counselor Kennedy?
One is a clarification and then another one's a question that was brought up by the public. So what I'm getting at is you do two shifts or three?
Four.
Counselor Kennedy, just a, is there a specific public that you're referring to or is this constituents or, or, because just to ask, oftentimes people will say, I've received a few calls, is there a?
No, it's the people that came and spoke in front of us the other night. So it's, I'm sorry, the answer?
There are four shifts.
Four shifts, okay. So we're, okay. Now, the other question I had was, one of the public members brought up that other communities do not pay for the services. Maybe you could explain that if they do or don't and how? In other words, if you go to another community and we use our services there?
Well, we have mutual aid agreements with 52 communities in three states. And just to let you know how far this goes, we were at the Malden Mills fire and we were in New Durham last year. Actually, I called the city manager from the top of the mountain as the commander of the strike team for the state that went up and did it. It's called mutual aid. And whether we go with a fire truck, whether we go with an ambulance to their fires or they come over to ours, no bills, no money is exchanged. It's something that has worked for hundreds of years. It is a great system. We, we had mutual aid in for our fire and we just went mutual aid today to Hampton for their fire. We went mutual aid over the weekend to Exeter for their fire. It's a great asset to know because there's no way we could staff enough apparatus for what we have. And that includes the Navy Yard, that includes P's, that includes everybody around us. They come, they don't ask questions, they come ready to work whether they're volunteer or full-time. And there's no, there's not been any talk of bills or recovering costs and it's certainly a system that works. Some communities have automatic mutual aid. They know they don't have the staffing to, to do such as the communities around us. So automatic aid, don't wait until someone's in trouble, don't wait until you get to the fire and find out they're trapped to call us. It's automatic aid. You get a report of a building fire, at least start us out the door and you'll be that much further ahead of the game. So we do the same thing with Hillcrest Estates. We know we have poor water in that district. North Hampton's tanker is automatic as soon as we report a structured fire in Hillcrest. We don't ask them, we don't pay them, they just come.
Counselor Reynolds?
Quick, quick follow-up to that. I guess, again, some people have asked me about that too and the feeling that, well, gee, we're the, we're the fully staffed, highly, you know, we've got the fully paid three-station fire department in the area. We know that some of the surrounding towns to us, you know, are a volunteer fire department. So, so people in the public perhaps rightly wonder, well, do we get as much as we give or are we subsidizing these communities around us with our fully paid staffed fire department? That's the question in the minds of the public. I'd like you to respond. But before I do that, I'll also reflect on the fact that, you know, it's a Seacoast community, people go here, we go out to Newcastle, we go to Rye, we go to Newington to the malls. We could be in an accident in Newington, Newington Fire Department would respond, but if they needed help, it'd be our fire department. So there's also a sense that, hey, our fire department covers us wherever we are in the Seacoast.
But it's really a two-way street. One, let's just take EMS out of it because if our ambulance goes to Greenland, to Newcastle, wherever they go, and we transport the patient, we bill the patient.
Reimbursed.
So that's revenue. As far as fire apparatus goes, if you remember the fatal fire on Clinton Street, Kittery comes over the bridge automatically. That's a volunteer fire department. The fire on Wield Road, Newington, you know, second truck in, again, it works. So whether they're volunteer full-time, whether we go help them out or they come help us out. And the reason it works for us, you think of the potential in Portsmouth and what fires that we have. And the council doesn't hear about most of the fires we do because of the staffing and the quick response times, because all huge fires start about this big. And as soon as we can get to them, we keep them that size.
Seen the film, right?
Yeah. When they do get away from us, when they do get a head start and we require mutual aid, we'll call in a whole lot of towns that rarely, rarely use us. So it works. It's a two-way street and again, nobody asks any questions. If anybody asks you about it, it's, it's one of the more perfect systems in the world. It just works. It's neighbors helping neighbors and it's just something we would never, ever even think of altering.
Keeping track. Thank you.
Counselor Novlin Clayberg?
One more point. When you were talking about that, I was impressed when I visited with you about how you do bill people that have to use the ambulance and you now have an employee that works specifically on that task of collecting the fees that are incurred. And it's, it's helped your revenue in the fire department. So I think that's important that people understand that that function is happening.
And that was a cooperative effort between our assistant chief, our administrative staff and the person you're talking about is our, is our halftime person that just looks at the ambulance bills to make sure the information's correct before they go to the billing company. And the policy on collection is something that was a joint effort with legal and our finance department. So again, about a half a million dollars a year in revenue and we're, we're picking up our collection rate on that.
Further questions before we move on to Public Works? Seeing none, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
At this time, what I'd like to do is have Steve Parkins come down and talk about Public Works overtime.
I wonder if we'll have as much snow next winter as we have this winter.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council. The FYO nine projected budget of $5,662,265 includes $246,500 or 4% for overtime. Our overtime is spread throughout a bunch of cost centers throughout the budget, dealing with the services we provide. The largest budgeted area is snow removal, where roughly 26% of that total overtime budget is earmarked for snow, followed closely behind by our solid waste group and streets and maintenance. Public Works is constantly looking for ways to provide our services in a cost-effective manner. Our existing collective bargaining agreements allow us some flexibility in scheduling of hours of employees when it's mutually agreeable between the employee and management. Some of the areas where we utilize this is equipment maintenance. We have some vehicles we cannot take out of service during regular business hours. So we'll arrange with mechanics to come in, say two hours early, to service those vehicles, get them on the road at 7:30 when they need to be out, and they in turn leave early in the afternoon. We do the same with our signs and lines. Throughout the summer months, warmer months, when we can get our painting done of crosswalks, lane lines, stop bars, they will start early in the morning when traffic is less and get the work done, do their shift time and leave early in the day. We do that with our early morning crew, which is a year-round operation, 4:00 AM to noon, where they're concentrating in keeping the downtown area in the close proximity to the downtown clean, emptying the trash barrels and the sidewalks clear. We also use them in the wintertime for our early warning to get salters out on the street before our regular crews come in at 7:30. When we have operations that impact some of our higher trafficked areas such as Lafayette Road or Miller, Middle Street, Woodbury Ave, Maplewood, where you have high traffic during the day, some of our operations such as pothole repairs, pre-work drainage repairs would impact that traffic, we'll arrange to schedule the guys to come in earlier, get the work done, and then they leave earlier in the day. Last but not least, buildings such as this, there are certain repairs and upkeep that we cannot do during regular business hours. So we'll arrange with our carpenter or our electrician to come in at off-hours for their shift rather than do it in the middle of the day. Another area within our contract or collective bargaining agreement that we were successful in getting in the last round was in our recycling area, that as we have new hires within that area, their hours are going to be not pinned to the Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 3:30 timeframe, but will be more flexible. So in the future, as vacancies occur there, then we can then look at the changing hours of our operation. It's important to note that Public Works does not replace one-for-one when somebody is out. That position is just not filled that day or filled by somebody else that's already scheduled to work. So we're not bringing people in on an overtime basis to do our regular work. Most of our overtime is weather-dependent. We haven't been able to figure out how to schedule snowstorms or heavy rainstorms or windstorms, 7:30 to 3:30, Monday through Friday. So unfortunately, depending upon the type of winter we have, impacts the bottom line as far as overtime is concerned. But as that overtime goes up, we diminish or cut back in other areas so that when we get to the end of the year, we're not overdrawn. Our financial penemation program allows us to track both dollars and hours for a number of things, whether it be our overtime or our regular hours. And we allocate to the various cost centers. Right now, we're tracking multiple areas within our solid waste to see what parts of that operation are most expensive and how can we cut back on those operations and make them more cost-effective. This coming year, we're looking at starting to track additional areas within other cost centers such as our streets to determine whether we've got certain types of emergencies that are occurring or are they routine overtime functions that need to be performed and looking at how much we're spending on overtime versus regular time for those operations. at how much we're spending on overtime versus regular time for those operations. Public Works since 1995 has had a policy in reference to comp time accrual and usage. We have some employees that like to, rather than be paid for their overtime, take it as comp time. We have a very strict policy on how much they can accrue and when it needs to be used. All of our leave time, whether it be annual, sick, personal days, funeral leave, comp time is all tracked through the penimation program. Since 1994, we've also had an overtime policy in Public Works. This requires that any overtime before it is worked has to be authorized by a supervisor. That same supervisor reauthorizes that overtime through the payroll programs that we have in the time card systems. Lastly, I, as the department head, approve the payroll every two weeks and approve the use of overtime. It's important to note that in the 2006 Matrix study that was done on overtime, Public Works expenditures per employee is significantly lower than comparable communities around us. I attribute that to the fact that we are very frugal in Public Works, we're very careful in how we spend our dollars, and will continue to do so in the future.
Thank you from the Public Works Director. Looks like you get off without any questions. Counsel Reynolds.
Sorry, Steve. Sorry, I got one.
You were close.
Can't let you go. Can't let you off that easy. Only because, you know, I asked a question around this last one meeting, couple of meetings ago, and you gave a good answer and I appreciated it. But I also, then I got a call from a constituent who said, oh, you're right on, man. Make sure you press him on that. No, it's not a lot of money. I note that you say our entire overtime budget is two, you know, two forty-six, just shy of a quarter million. It's 4% of your whole budget. You said about a quarter of that, 26% is for snow removal, so about 65K. But, you know, $65,000, a couple cents on the tax rate, it's 600 bucks to a homeowner, 50 bucks a month. So, they're wondering. We do, and as you said, the snow removal is un, you know, we don't control it. We call in overtime.
Ned, is there a question?
The question is this. What, when we call, when we use contractors for snow removal, how, what are the parameters for that? When we call somebody who owns a truck and we ask them, come out and help us plow?
Mr. Ward, Mayor. Yes, please. This question has been asked at least three times since I've sat here since January. How many times are we going to ask the same question?
Mike, sorry, Assistant Mayor. My question is what, what, how do we track how much they're working and is there a minimum that they're entitled to be paid? How does it work? Because I've had people tell me, you know, hey, I see people driving around plowing bare ground too. And it's just one of those little things that people say to us, said to me, want to make sure that we're controlling that. How does it work?
First off, we do not hire contractors to plow for us. The people that are out there plowing the city streets are Public Works employees. They're the same people that pick up trash, deal with the water, sewer, any of our functions. These are the same people. I do hire one grader and a loader to augment our own operations. But the plow trucks that you see in the neighborhoods are our own people. And those people are supervised. Typically, there will be a foreman that's in charge of the operation. I myself am out there supervising as well. And most times, you'll find the general foreman out there supervising if he is on call. So, it's our people that are doing the work and we're out there watching what they're doing. Now, in snow removal in the downtown, I will hire trucks to haul snow. And that's all they do is haul snow. We load them, they go dump, come back. And they're constantly in a cycle, so.
Okay. Again, I consider it our job to ask the hard questions so that people know we're asking. I appreciate, I appreciate the answer again. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Parkinson.
Your Honor, the next presentation is Senator—
Next presentation is Senator Martha Fuller-Clark addressing Retirement Bill HB 1645.
And as she comes up to the podium, if I might, Senator, I did provide some information, I will be providing information to the City Council that was requested by Counselor Pantalakis. Pass that down.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Your Honor, I just wanted to indicate to the City Council before Senator Clark gets ready to make her presentation, what we provided you was information that shows if HB 1645 is passed by the Senate, what it would entail in terms of costs, additional costs of fiscal ten. And if HB 1645 is not passed by the Senate, as originally presented by the House, what those costs would be. You see that in fiscal ten, if HB 1645 is not passed, there's an additional cost of $1.5 million additional for overtime or about 39 cents on the tax rate. Counselor Pantalakis asked me on Friday if we could provide costs by police, fire, teacher, municipal. And these are average with overtime in there. And it pretty much shows you pretty, what it would be if 1645 is passed and is not passed. So, I just wanted to show the City Council about this information and just kind of keep that in mind. I'm sure Senator Clark will talk about some of the funding impacts for the Senate version.
Thank you. Senator Martha Fuller-Clark.
Thank you very much for making it possible for me to be here this evening. I hope I'll be able to answer your questions, and if I'm not, I will get you additional information. What I have handed out to you for this evening are two charts. One will look at the estimated fiscal impact of House Bill 645 on state and political subdivisions. And the second looks at the estimated total fiscal impact on all the groups that are part of the retirement system. Again, this is a larger chart for you to look at here, and I'll talk about this in a minute in terms of actual, so we can ask questions or look at these charts together. I wanted to talk a little bit about the process. And I know that you're all aware that the House began the process of looking at the retirement situation as a result of a study and the commission, the retirement commission that had been put together over the last year, when it was determined that our, the monies in our retirement system were about 61% or 63% of what was actually needed to fund that system going forward. And there are a number of reasons for that. I'm not really going to go into that report tonight, but I would be happy again to provide you with that report and to ask you questions. But it seems to me the charge this evening is to really talk about this legislation and where we ended up. When the bill came out of the House, they had provided a House bill that addressed, according to our sort of analysis after the fact, had addressed many of the employers' concerns. It capped the medical subsidies for an indefinite period of time. It took away the employees' majority on the board, and it removed other compensation from inclusion in the computation of benefits. When the bill came over to the Senate, we had over 12 hours of testimony addressing the bill that had come out of the House and the concerns from the employee community, which were considerable. And we identified three concepts that we believed were important to include in the Senate version of the bill. I think you know that I sit as the vice chair of the Executive Departments and Administration Committee in the Senate, and this is where the bill came. We wanted first to ensure that we could create a bill where we could get the support of the Senate. I think we all know that if we don't pass retirement reforms this year, the impact is, you've heard from the mayor, just on this community alone, would be 1.2 million if no legislation is approved. For both the state and municipalities, it would be around $53 million across the state. That seems to all of us an unacceptable increase and a burden that would be intolerable in terms of our municipalities, in terms of the taxpayers in our municipalities. So, we are all committed to working towards legislation that will pass. And it was also the belief of our committee from the testimony that we heard that we needed to achieve a greater sense of balance between the needs of the employers and the needs of the employees. So, one of the first steps that was taken was to remove those provisions in the House bill that did not save money in the short term, let's say in the next 10 years, but were creating a major pushback among the employee community. We also, and this is important to understand in terms of the Committee of Conference, where there will be, I believe now it's five members from the House and four members from the Senate will be appointed to reconcile the two different versions of the legislation as we go into a Committee of Conference. The members of those Committees of Conference, both in the House and Senate, will be appointed on Wednesday. And then, the Committee of Conference dates will be scheduled. I will be happy to let the city manager and the mayor know when those conferences are scheduled, but they take on a life of their own as well. So, we'll try to keep you up to date as to when they're scheduled. If they recess, then they reschedule.
Thank you.
And so, it was important that we were able to address a number of different issues in the bill so that every single one of those issues would be able to be negotiated with the House Conferes. And so, nothing would be taken off the table, in other words, as we went forward to find a solution that both the House and the Senate could support. And finally, we wanted to craft a bill that would not increase the rates higher than those required by the House proposal. The Senate believes that they succeeded on all accounts. The Senate version addressed the first point by taking out the age-retirement provisions put in by the House. And I know that is of concern to the city of Portsmouth. But again, it's important to realize that the parameters within which we were working were what could we address today in terms of resolving the problems? And that some of these issues that were not going to have an immediate financial impact, either on employees or employers, are issues that could continue to be negotiated as we move forward. Because I can assure you that this is an ongoing and dynamic process and that we're not going to be finished in terms of addressing how we continue to resolve the problems with the retiree program in the future. We also had passed a bill earlier this year that provided the Senate version of governance. It preserved the employees' majority on the board. And in addition to that, it created two subcommittees of the Board of Trustees for the retirement system. One is an investment committee that would be staffed with appointees that had serious professional experience in the area of investments. And they would be working on the day-to-day investment positions and tracking what was happening to the retirement fund and making recommendations back to the Board of Trustees. And that Board of Trustees would have the ultimate policy setting for the retirement system. But they wouldn't be expected to track on a day-to-day basis or a week-to-week basis what was happening with the fund and to be making changes as necessary in the investment portfolio. The second committee is an audit committee. It turned out that as we began to examine the retirement system, that while there had been an annual state audit of the retirement system, that audit was basically to ensure that the monies that were involved in the retirement system were being spent appropriately. It was not an audit to look at how the investments of the retirement system were doing in relationship to the market, in relationship to the economy. The last time that type of professional audit was done was in 1994. And so, it was the belief of the Senate ED&amp;A Committee that we needed to insticate a system going forward that would ensure that those regular outside investment audits would occur as well. That would be the job of that audit committee to hire the firm to do that type of investment and to report back to the Board as a whole. And I think you know that those audits are quite expensive, but the recommendation is that they should be done at least every three years in order to keep an ongoing understanding and handle of the status of the investments. So, and we also asked that there be a consideration of moving forward, an evaluation of what might or might not be bonded in the retirement fund. And that's specifically around the issue of medical benefits. We capped the increase in the medical subsidy this year at eight, it's been an 8% annual increase in the medical subsidy. In the Senate version, we capped that increase this year rather than next, and we use the savings to address the future issues, particularly a plan that would say that moving out until 2011, it would be compounded annually at, with a 4% increase annually rather than an 8%. In addition to that, we added a COLA. The COLA had been removed. We added a COLA of 2.5% for the first 40, well, there was an amendment. We first started at 30, and then an amendment on the floor put the cap on that COLA up to 40%, I mean, $40,000 of benefit. But because that also left many very poorly-paid members of the retirement community, especially our teachers, we included a 13th check of $1,000 for each retired member earning $20,000 or less. Now, that was also amended. And let me explain to you, in a floor amendment, in order to have a more equitable distribution and one that was fairer, the amendment supported a 13th check in the amount of $1,000 to those retirees making less than $20,000, and here's the new language, who completed more than 15 years of service or had retired due to accidental or ordinary disability. In addition to that, there was a 13th check in the amount of $500 for those retirees who were taking a one-person medical benefit and $1,000 for those retirees taking a two-person benefit, exclusive of the state employees whose health care benefits are covered by the state. Now, the reason for that was by capping the automatic 8% increase in the medical subsidy this year, we were not providing any mechanism to help those people cover the increase in their medical costs or medical insurance. So, this was an attempt to address that, but to address it in a financially responsible way. Those are the major changes that occurred in the Senate bill. And what I want to have you now turn to the charts and look at, that we did all of this without exceeding the House required rate increase of 15%. And that had been what had been the floor cap, let's say the cap in the House bill. So the rate increases in both versions cannot be reduced, because it is, in essence, the first payment on the $2.7 billion underfunded amount that is the responsibility of the employers. But we didn't go beyond that. So from a financial impact, both the House bill and the Senate bill are the same. And you may ask, how were we able to provide the COLAs and those additional 13th checks? We were able to do that, because for every year that you don't pay out the 8% increase in the medical subsidy, it's $77 million. Now, there also is a committee that has been set up to address going forward how we will meet the medical benefit requirements of the employees. That is not something that we have solved. We have a four-year period in which to do that. That's one of the areas where there might be a recommendation that perhaps part of that obligation could be met through bonding. We really don't have an answer to that. I think you know that the IRS came in and with the legal advice, or legal counsel, they explained to us that it was in violation of IRS rules to be paying the medical subsidy out of the retirement fund. And that's why it's important to look for another mechanism. I'm simplifying that. I hope that's clear to everybody. So we had two major issues. We had a retirement fund that was significantly underfunded, and at the same time, we had a retirement fund that was paying a medical subsidy that was deemed to be in violation of the IRS. That has created enormous problems. The other component is that by doing this, that the $250 million that is in what was the medical subsidy pot will now go over into the base retirement fund to bring that percentage up to about 67%. And then the hope is that over the next years, with more aggressive and professional management, that the retirement fund will begin to grow and stabilize, and we'll see better management and begin to grow that fund in a way that we're not at this very low level in terms of the overall funding. It's my understanding that it's important that our retirement fund get up to somewhere between 80% to 85% of the obligation, and not at this really unacceptable level that it is at today. So what I'd like to do before you ask any questions is to go through these charts with you, so that you can see here, I'm never very good at this, you can see here that this talks about...
Senator, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but can you take the handheld microphone? Make sure that it's on.
Sure.
And as you...
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
Is it on?
Yes, we have.
Yes.
We have you on.
Okay. If you look at the charts here on this side, you can see this is the millions of dollars, the total employer contribution. And you will look at, the total employer contribution for 2009 is $252 million. Under the current law, that would need to grow to $387 million if we do nothing. That would be the employer obligation across the state. Under the House plan, what happens here is that the, this is where the fund is, this is the additional money that would have to be contributed, and the total amount is $303,200, I believe. Okay. And then, under the Senate plan, it's just a little bit more expensive. It goes from $303.2 to $303.9 in terms of the overall contribution that would be made from the employers. And here, if you look at the, and this is the medical. Remember, the people are getting their medical, they're just not getting the increase, the 8% increase. Here is the state obligation. And again, you can see that if you look at the difference between the House plan and the Senate plan, that we've taken out the medical and are not having it calculated until four years from now, so right now. And we don't actually know what that cost will be, but we believe it will be, we just haven't had the actuaries come back and tell us, but we believe that it will be very comparable to what you're seeing under the House plan. We just don't have the absolute specifics. Then, if you come here, here's the political subdivisions. And again, it shows the medical subsidy not having been calculated, but actually, in terms of the pension component, the dollars and the obligation in both the House plan and the Senate plan stay the same. And again, up here, and you have it on your charts, it shows you what are the key changes. Current law, no transfer. The medical subsidy continues to grow at 8%, and the rates are at 25% of the total contributions. If you go to the House version, they transfer $250 million from the special account to the corpus of the fund. The 8% is contained in the medical subsidy through FY 2009, and then it is frozen for the future. Here, you'll see the less, the rates are lesser of the solvency, 25% of the total contributions. And under the Senate version, the transfer is the same, the $250 million from the special account into the corpus of the fund. We freeze the medical subsidy for four years, and then say that it will grow at 4% after four years. That's known as the 4x4 plan. We don't know yet how we're going to pay for that. No. And finally, the rate setting is the same as the House. Now, if we go to the second chart... What this really shows you here is what happens in terms of the teachers and the firemen and the police. Under the House version, the cost for the pension stays the same. The cost for the medical subsidies goes down by about $3.5 million. And then here, for the firemen and the police, you can see here that actually, the cost for the pension stays the same, but the cost with regard to fire and police goes from $77 million to $80 million. But what we, so that gives you just an idea of what the impacts would be on these various components who are part of the benefit package. I'd be happy to answer questions, and I guess that's what I'll do.
Thank you, Senator. I'm going to yield the gavel at this point, and just ask a question or two, and then recognize questions from others.
Mayor Frinney.
Thank you. Senator, I'm trying to ask the ultimate question, if you know the answer. Given the way this is going in Conference Committee, can you tell us, and have you done a calculation for all of your constituent towns, as to what you think this is going to cost on the taxes? Because, you know, that's the first question we need to understand.
It's my understanding, as we look at both bills, both versions of the bill today, that, and in, as your city manager has estimated, that your increase for retirement costs would be $232,362, John, is that correct?
Correct. With $1645, yes.
With $1645. And that's going to be true for both bills. And if the legislation doesn't pass, it will be $1.6 million.
Do you have a sense at this time, what the likelihood of success is, heading towards the $232,000 figure for us selfishly?
I believe the likelihood of success is great. I think, as I said earlier, no one wants to leave our municipalities exposed with an overall obligation of $57 million and the impact that it would have on local property taxes.
Just one or two more questions, then I'll yield the floor. As part of potential savings, have you looked at the age of retirees presently? My understanding is that people can work till they're, they can work 20 years and retire at 45.
This is for the police and the firemen. The teachers do not retire till they're 60, and that's one of the reasons that we were concerned and tried to put some more financial underpinnings on the Senate side, because we have teachers who are living longer than they expected to live, who may have been retired for 20 or 25 years, and the benefits that they are getting are really pretty shocking. And we thought anything that we could do to help them was an important part of the package. With regard to the firemen and the police, they are, as you said, currently allowed to retire at 45. That gives them the opportunity to be able to go out and get a second job if they wish, and to supplement their earnings, so that when they fully retire, they have a larger base to draw on. It is true that the House recommended that we raise the age of retirement to 50. There are a number of communities across the country that have done that. That will be clearly one of the issues that will be on the table when we go to the Committee of Conference.
And is it a fair question to say that at age 45, when they retire, they get full benefits in medical, or is that not an accurate understanding?
I believe that is an accurate understanding.
Okay. And just the question is, could you tell us, do you agree with 45, and if so, why would that be justified?
We have heard from the firemen and the police that if they are required to work until 50, it will be harder for them to get a second job in order to augment their earnings for that next 20-year period. And secondly, there is concern about the physical ability even in, by adding those additional five years. Those were the reasons that we heard for objecting to adding the additional five years in age.
The other constituents that you represent, obviously, besides fire and police and the taxpayers, and have you heard anything from communities about how they feel about that?
We have heard particularly from the city of Portsmouth, that they would prefer that we go to age 50. Again, as I said to you, there are still some thorny issues to be worked out. We understand that if we were to require the firemen and the police to go to 50, that there could ultimately be some cost savings for municipalities. There would not be immediate cost savings, so I believe that that's something that will continue to be under discussion, will be potentially negotiated during the Committee of Conference, or will be something that will be continued to look at as we give further consideration to strengthening the retirement program in the state.
Senator, I just want to clarify something. The age, when the city of Portsmouth was on record as going to age 50, that was for all new hires.
That's correct.
After July 1, 2009. So the contract, when somebody came to work in 1988, you know, that would be fulfilled, that would not...
Right. There's no intent in violating any of the existing contracts.
Prospective.
We all understand that it's prospective. But again, as I said, that I anticipate that that will be one of the items where there will be continued discussion in the Committee of Conference.
Thank you, Senator. And one last, with regard to having Board of Trustee members who would represent employing municipalities, is that in the works?
Could you repeat your question?
It is my understanding, and it may be an incorrect understanding, that there are, the Board of Trustees is a matrix for the retirement fund, and that it does not include, in its current incarnations, municipal representation, people who are municipal, you know, be it city managers, or be it whatever it may be. Is there a reason that that's so, if I'm correct? And do you know whether the makeup of that committee is something that's under debate and discussion as well?
Certainly, the makeup of that committee will be under debate and discussion during the Committee of Conference, and I know that one of the issues will be raised as, should there be a different representation on that Board of Trustees?
Do you have any intention to raise questions about that representation?
Absolutely.
You do?
Absolutely.
Appreciate that. I'll yield the floor and take the gavel back. Counsel Dwyer.
Well, I guess it's fair to say that, you know, for starters, never in my professional adult life have I seen or been part of anything that is as big a mess as New Hampshire's retirement system. And I've said this on many occasions, and had many people around the state agree with me, that while we've been worrying about education funding, this is the real thing that's going to sink our communities. So, you know, I think we would urge you to not think in the short term, I'm very disappointed that the Senate would think that what we need are short-term solutions rather than short plus long-term solutions, which is what I think the House was going for. And hard for me to believe that the Senate couldn't be convinced of that. A question. Since all of the actuarial underpinnings that were done before were inaccurate and got us into this mess in the first place, what confidence do we have that the estimates that the Senate is basing its estimates on have any more credibility than anything else we've heard about the system?
Well, let me just ask you, I think that would be true for both the House and the Senate. Okay. And I do believe that they have hired new actuaries. We have an outstanding woman who is now serving as President of the Board of Trustees, Lisa Shapiro, who is a well-known and trained and very credible economist. What we are trying to do is to put those professionals in place, so that as we go forward, we will not repeat the situation that occurred in the past. And that's all, you know, that's what I can tell you, is that we're changing the professionals who are looking at that. We're bringing more credible individuals on board. We clearly have the analysis that was done by the Retirement Commission, which also brought in a number of experts. And let me just say to you, that we may be in worse shape than other states, but all states are looking at really significant problems with their retirement systems and the dollars that they're going to have available going forward. I know that there also will be some consideration, perhaps looking over time, if it would be possible to shift the entire way that retirement is paid in the state of New Hampshire, but it's, that's also a very expensive solution, because you have the people that you're obligated to now, as you might try to give your new employees coming forward a 401K plan as opposed to a state plan.
Counsel Dwyer.
Well, I appreciate what you said about Lisa Shapiro, but the credibility of all this rests on the trustees being able to accept the recommendations made by an audit committee, made by an investment committee, and that's what I don't think we see any movement on. So that seems critical to all of this. I mean, you know, and on the one hand, it doesn't seem like a money thing, and yet it is the essence of how we...
Well, management is at the bottom of all of this. If we don't have the right management in place...
Right.
We're all at risk of having an insoluble retirement program in place. And I do believe that the governance will, as I've said... And I do believe that the governance will, as I've said, be another issue that will be on the table at the Committee of Conference.
Counsel Spear.
This is kind of repeating what Counsel Dwyer said, but I hope not too much regarding governance. And you mentioned that the current board will continue the same, but there'll be an advisory committee of professional investors to do the day-to-day operations of the retirement system. But I imagine today, there's professionals doing the day-to-day management. I mean, I don't imagine the current board goes on E-Trade or anything and does their own stuff, but they probably hire an investment firm to do that. So how, and that investment firm would give advice as well. So I don't see how it would really change by having another committee.
Well, I think certainly there was a feeling that the Board of Trustees did not have access to professional investment management or didn't take advantage and use the best professional investment management that was out there. I think that was truly a problem with the system. So, and I think they, you know, while they might have someone who was actualizing the investments, it was the Board of Trustees that were making the investment decisions. So this would be quite a different approach.
And then again, just an observation on the governance issue. I mean, we can see how many millions of dollars can change based on assumptions that are made, whether the assumptions are growth or the assumptions are medical expenses or longevity, these things. And all these assumptions are judgment calls that have to be made by eventually the board. And it'll be very, very tempting in the future for people to keep the budgets in line, to make optimistic assumptions. And so I think it's that much more important to have people or impartial, disinterested parties like professional investment advisors to be, have a seat at the table, because it's going to be so tempting for other stakeholders to make it look sunny.
Well, one of the other pieces that will be put in place is much more aggressive reporting that will be required of the board regardless of its makeup, and an opportunity for that to be fully vetted on a regular basis, which is something that was not happening.
Counsel Reynolds, then Counselor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope this doesn't seem like piling on, but I guess my question is along the same lines of Counsel Spears and Counsel Dwyer's. I agree with much of what Counselor Spears said. I'm puzzled, not to say astounded, that we have had a retirement system that didn't have access to professional investment management advice. That's amazing. So I'm glad that we're changing that. But it still sounds like the remedy here, sounds like forming, we're going to have a Board of Trustees, then we're going to have two committees, then we're going to spend, you said that we would audit it much more frequently, and the audits are expensive, but they'll be worth it. But it sounds like the remedy is tending toward more overhead, more bureaucracy, more spending on audit, which audits are necessarily retrospective. Why aren't we, as a state, moving in the direction of a more streamlined and transparent, direct contracting out for, you know, with results expected to a, you know, many of the, one of the many, many well-known, you know, professional investment management firms which would report to the state and report to the public in the same manner that any of us. We have a 401K at work, we get an annual statement, and we see what the returns are, and results are expected, or, you know, they'll lose the contract. Why aren't we going towards simpler and more transparent and sort of, it sounds to me like multi-layered bureaucracy?
There is clearly, clearly an attempt to be more transparent, that there will be a, with a, you know, correct opportunity for professionals to come forward, to be able, to be chosen, to actually handle the investments. And I think the real debate is, should that be done by the board, by a reformulated board, by the existing board, or should that be done in conjunction with an investment committee that works as the intermediary between the firm that would be hired so that there's greater accountability? And clearly, those reports are going to be made. They will be made to the legislature, they will be available to the public on an ongoing basis, as well as to the Board of Trustees, to the Governor, to the Speaker of the House, and to the President of the Senate. There has not been transparency. Unfortunately, I can't explain to you all the reasons for that, and, but we know that that is one of the commitments that we have moving this legislation forward.
Thank you. Any other questions for Counsel Kennedy?
Actually, that was kind of my question about the transparency, and thank you for coming.
Oh, you're very welcome.
The transparency, how is, how are you showing that that's going to happen? How are you coming about the decision in that committee? And, you know, someone that's personally being kind of in the middle of the system at an age, the question I have is, is kind of going along with Counsel Dwyer, what's the long term for only, for not only the communities, but for the retirees? And I'm not really seeing, I see short term, I don't see long term, and someone that's got another 25 years to go.
Well, I think the long-term commitment is to rebuild the fund so that when you arrive at your time to be able to draw down on that retirement fund, that the dollars will be there. I mean, the bottom line is to rebuild this fund and to rebuild it in a sustainable form going forward. I was just going to look here, I will leave you with a copy of the bill, but I was going to look forward, look here to see if I could tell you more about the transparency component. As I said, there's a commission that's going to continue to address the issue of the retiree healthcare benefits funding model. The members of that committee will be three members of the House, two members of the Senate, the Chairperson of the New Hampshire Retirement System Board of Trustees, representatives from Group One and Group T of the retirement system, two representatives of the municipal and school employees in the retirement system appointed by the Governor, six public members with recognized expertise in finance, financial management, healthcare finance, healthcare delivery, and the governance and oversight of large endowments or public funds. They will be appointed by the Governor. One retired member of the retirement system currently receiving benefits appointed by the Speaker of the House, and one, and jointly, and the President of the Senate. And their duties are to analyze models that are in use by other states, to collect information from experts in the field, to consider different vehicles for a plan including government trusts, voluntary employee benefit associations, 401H trusts, and health savings accounts; to consider and analyze the appropriate and effective use of bonding by the state in order to provide an affordable medical subsidy; and to consider the following principles in designing a recommended plan that, one, allows for members and employer contributions; two, that utilizes tax-advantaged contributions, earnings, and benefit distributions; three, that includes pre-funding for cost-effectiveness, security, and to satisfy the Government Accounting Standards Board and the Internal Revenue Service; four, to permit employer contributions through negotiated matches for the currently active members; five, to permit additional voluntary member contributions; six, to make sure it's administered efficiently; seven, is available and integrated with other benefits; eight, allows unused, sick, and vacationally to be contributed towards the medical subsidy and is viable long term. Additionally, in designing a recommended plan, they are to consider the following possibilities: bonding to assist in the establishment of the trust, or the transfer of medical subsidy-eligible active members and the retirees to a new healthcare funding model; two, the integrating the new trust with existing subsidy-eligible state employees and the benefits currently provided under RSA 21-I-30; three, moving all subsidy-eligible retirees into a new plan, bringing the current 401H sub-trust funding with them if permitted; four, analyzing alternative retiree healthcare insurance programs for political subdivision retirees and Medicare retirees that would reduce the overall costs of medical care; and then to seek technical assistance as necessary from the New Hampshire Retirement System and from other independent financial investment actuarial and retirement experts. So that's that commission that deals with moving forward on the challenge of addressing healthcare benefits. Now, the members, for the management of the funds, the members of the Board of Trustees shall be the trustees of several funds created hereby, and shall set all policies relative to investment of those funds. The trustees shall appoint and oversee an investment committee that shall have full power to invest and reinvest such funds in accordance with the policies set by the board. The members of the investment committee shall serve at the pleasure of the Board of Trustees, and the Board of Trustees shall have the powers, principles, and immunities of a corporation. The members of the Board of Trustees shall authorize the investment committee to invest and reinvest such funds in participation units in the public deposit investment pool established pursuant to RSA 383-22. Said investment committees shall have full power-
Senator, I hate to interrupt you.
That's okay.
But I think we can read the bill if we need to.
It's true.
And I do appreciate that. I think that we've had two very long presentations at the beginning of our meeting, both of them informative and evocative of a lot of questions. So, you know, if you want to refer us to those portions of the bill, I think are, just from the questions you get-
I appreciate that, Mayor Farini, and I will leave this with you.
That's fine. Additional questions for Senator Clark? Laura Panalakis.
Yes, Senator Clark.
Yes, thank you.
You spoke in there of two subcommittees. Where are those subcommittees going to come from?
The trustees.
You said you had two separate subcommittees.
Right.
Is that off the same board?
No. They're totally independent of the board. They will be appointed by, I believe it's the Governor and a number of other individuals. And so they are not made up of members of the board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, Senator Clark, thank you very much for attending and presenting such a deal.
You're very welcome, and I will keep you apprised of what goes on with the Committee of Conference.
We do appreciate that, and I think it's a fair summary, given the nature and extent of the questions that you receive, that we will continue to follow its progress in close detail and try to make sure that we understand as best as we can and try to help with the process in any way that we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. At this time, just for the record, folks, we've got, these two presentations have taken us two hours. I want to, I think the city clerk, as she takes the minutes, is going, we're all going to need a recess, but I think we have some patient people who've been sitting here for the public comment session. We'd like to get to them if we could. And so at this time, we'll go forward with public. Well, first of all, we need a motion on the acceptance of the minutes for the May 5, 2008 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Now we move to the public comment session. To tell you, this evening, we have four listed, or rather, five listed on the public comment session. Please come up, identify yourself and where you live. You have three minutes in which to make your presentation. At 2 minutes and 30 seconds, you will see a sign raised by the city attorney who will be timing you, and then when you hit the end, you will see the red "Thank You." And with that, we would also say that if any of you have summary comments to offer for others, that practice is certainly most welcome. So please begin. Our first speaker this evening is James Horrigan, if he could come forward regarding advertising at Leary Field.
Good evening, everyone. James Horrigan, 35 Elwin Avenue. At least, that was the name of our street at last report. I'm here to speak to you about a letter in your packet that's requests signage at Leary Field by a athletic group that will run through mid-November. I come as a citizen, taxpayer, it's the use of city property which gives me some concern, and I feel as I'm, in a very small way, a part-owner of this property. And I live in the immediate neighborhood, it's a view out the front of my house. There was previous, similar requests by, for baseball season for the same kind of signage, and I spoke to a previous city council on that. At that time, I questioned the very principle of using city property for commercial advertising. I still feel very uneasy about that. But any event, it changes the ambience of a neighborhood, it may even affect property values. And in this particular property, the Leary Field area is a magnificent vista, it has sweeping views with the city landscape behind it. I think it'd be a shame to ruin it with all kinds of advertising. I realize there's been efforts by Assistant City Manager Cynthia Hayden to design a more tasteful sign. I have viewed the current signs at the Little League Field out on the plains. I agree they are improvement, but they're still outdoor advertising, you just can't disguise advertising, no matter how hard you try. Also, I recognize there were only two signs last year at Leary Field, but I'm presuming there'll be many more this year because it was sort of the first go-around for the baseball Also, those signs were promised to come down at the end of the baseball season, but they were up after Thanksgiving weekend. I don't know when they came down, but it was probably in December. As I said a year ago or two years ago, whenever I spoke on this previously, we're really putting ourselves on a slippery slope here once you start allowing private groups to use city property for advertising, no matter how well-intended. And here, we're on it now. We have a second group asking for more advertising. I would obviously prefer you say no to the second request, that one's enough, but failing that, I would really ask you, or plead with you really, to solicit neighborhood input this time around. Thank you. Indeed, why not send it to the zoning board and have them get a variance like any other entity that would want to put up similar advertising? It's asking really a lot of a neighborhood to look at a collection of outdoor advertising for six months out of the year, 24 hours a day, week after week. So please, get some more input on this one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Wright regarding pedicabs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, for having me tonight, putting me on your agenda. I just want to take a few quick moments and possibly address some concerns that may be before the City Council about the business. Why pedicabs? It's the most ecologically responsible mode of transportation currently mass-produced in the United States. It's a new green business that the community can embrace. It's a public service. It's basically a 21-speed trike with hydraulic disc brakes in the back, fully lit up and safe to see. Moving up to Portsmouth to relocate here to start this business, I hope the community will embrace it, and thank you very much for your time. I'm going to move on as later on in the agenda, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll recognize John Shea regarding the Fernald Court Dock.
Hi, I'm not John Shea, but I'm here representing the newly-formed Salter Creek Neighborhood Recreation Association. John Shea's the president, I'm the treasurer. There's a handful of people here, we aren't all going to speak, just a couple of people. We exist-
Could you identify yourself?
Robin Hackett, excuse me.
And could you give us your address?
Ridges Court, 46 Ridges Court. I'm John Shea's neighbor.
Thank you.
We exist in order to preserve the public access to the water at the end of Fernald Court and the Bunny Kitch Memorial Dock, which facilitates that public access and recreation. There are a lot of us here, as I said, but Joanne Stella has a few more details about our organization and the history of what we're trying to accomplish.
Thank you. I take it, the next speaker is Joanne Stella.
Thank you. My name is Joanne Stella. I'm a resident of 25 Ridges Court here in Portsmouth. I'm also a member of the Salter Creek Neighborhood Recreation Association and a property owner who owns property abutting Fernald Court. There is a hearing tomorrow in Rockingham County Superior Court on an emergency injunction to hopefully prevent another abutting property owner on Fernald Court, Rebecca Harvey, from tearing down the dock. And I'd like to give a little background information about the street and the dock and ask for some specific support from the city. Fernald Court is a public street to the water of Salter Creek, and on that public right away was built- was built a dock, perhaps by some accounts as early as the 1900s and for sure in the 1960s, probably by Bunny Kinch, who's now deceased but was also a resident of Fernald Court and whose daughter and son-in-law still reside in a house on that street. The waterfront property is owned by Becky Harvey on one side and the McLeod family on the other. How Fernald Court became a public street is a little clouded and mystery, as lots of old streets and towns like Portsmouth are. However, time and again, I believe this council on various issues regarding Fernald Court, and I believe also Attorney Sullivan, has reiterated in no uncertain terms that Fernald Court is a public right-of-way to the water. How it became that, whether it was by prescriptive easement or by specific dedication and acceptance, is a little unclear, but it is clear that it is a public right-of-way all the way to the water. Several years ago, the McLeod's deeded any right title or interest in their half of the right-of-way to the city, just to make it clear that they would not obstruct the right-of-way to the water by the public. This was done in conjunction with their request to build their own dock. No one in the neighborhood opposed their request. Everyone just wanted to make sure the public right-of-way was not infringed, and it was not, and the matter was settled with the deed from the McLeod's to the city. The dock, however, is on the other half of the right-of-way that abuts the Harvey property. In the summer of 2007, Becky Harvey put her house up for sale. She also, around that same time, filed a request with the State Department of Environmental Services to tear down the old dock at the end of Fernald Court and build a new one. Department of Environmental Services never issued the permit because they were notified by several property owners that there was a genuine legal issue as to who owned the dock. DES won't give her a permit to build her own dock because she can't have two docks on one property. So as long as the city claims that she owns the dock, she can't build her own. DES won't give her the permit, and as long as the ownership issue is unsettled, DES won't issue a permit, and I believe that that's their policy. Since the issue was stalled with DES, it appears that Becky Harvey, through her attorney, has devised another strategy where they recently sent a letter saying that they were going to tear down the dock and withdrew their permit through DES. As a result of that letter, we had to file, our neighborhood association filed an emergency petition for an injunction to prevent the dock from being torn down. We're here tonight to plead for a political solution that we can present to the court tomorrow at this hearing to help us to get the injunction to stop the dock from being torn down. It's my understanding that Bob Sullivan will be at the hearing tomorrow, and we hope that the message from you will be directed to tell him, to tell the court that the city is in support of preserving the dock. And if I may just take one more brief second, the easiest solution is for the city to say that Becky Harvey does not own the dock. If she doesn't own it, she can get her own permit, and that's a done deal. And our neighborhood association, in addition to addressing the issues of liability, which the next speaker will talk about, we are also willing to purchase $1 million of insurance. We've raised enough money to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our final speaker for public comment session tonight is Michael Rainbough.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. As stated, my name is Mike Rainbough. I live on the corner of Newcastle Avenue, Ridges Court. I'm a vice president of this neighborhood association, and tomorrow, as Joanne Stella said, Judge McHugh of the Rockingham County Superior Court will be hearing a petition that's been filed to enjoin Rebecca Harvey from tearing down the dock. In order for us to win that hearing, we need to convince the court of two things. First, that irreparable harm will occur, and I think there's no doubt about that. Once the dock is torn down, the dock that's been there for forty-plus years will cease to exist. The first step, however, would be to convince the court that we have a likelihood of success on the merits of the case. And basically, our case comes down to this: We don't believe that Rebecca Harvey owns the right-of-way. We think the city, we all own the right-of-way. And we would ask that you instruct Attorney Sullivan, as representative of our city, to simply tell the court tomorrow that the city is in favor of trying to preserve the dock. We're not asking you to make any big decisions tonight. I know, I just got the letter from Bob Sullivan to Rebecca Harvey's attorney on May 15, four days ago, which didn't give me enough time to get on the agenda, so I know we're not officially on the agenda. But if you could entertain some sort of a motion to suspend the rules, to at least entertain a motion to address this issue and ask that when Attorney Sullivan meets with the court tomorrow, he tells the court that the city council supports an effort to try to save the dock. So we're just trying to buy some more time so the dock doesn't get torn down as early as sometime within the next week or so. So that's all I have to say. Any questions, I'd be glad to take them.
Thank you. That closes the public comment session, and it's, a few people have given me the eye that we would perhaps have a brief recess. Before I entertain a motion for that, I would just like to point out that our own Adam Leach of the Portsmouth Herald is back with us, having had, he and his wife Barbara, a baby boy, Dylan Richard Leach, May 5, 2008, eight pounds. And I just wanted to make sure, while there were still people left in the chamber and before press time. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for brief recess. So moved, Your Honor. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
No, we need to move.
Thank you. We're back now from our recess and like to go forward with the next portion of our agenda, which is approval of grants and donations. The first is an acceptance of a donation to the Coalition Legal Fund, Town of Hampton, $1,000. And Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved to accept. Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Consideration of resolutions and ordinances. We have a first reading of a resolution authorizing the borrowing in anticipation of revenues and taxes in the amount of $16 million. This is tax anticipation, I believe. And do we have a motion?
Make a motion to pass first reading and hold a public hearing adoption of resolution on our June 2nd council meeting.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. The consent agenda. A motion would be in order to accept the consent agenda. Remember the rules. If you see something that you would like to take out for individual consideration, please do so. There is one item, a variety of donations for this evening. Acceptance of donations for an overnight art event. Susan Conway, $1,000. Fidelity Charitable Gift Fund for George Freese, $1,000. Jumpin' Jays Fish Cafe, $500. Dos Amigos Burritos, $500. And Presa Resource Group, $200. Karen and Anthony Manin, $100. Susan Carlisle, $100. And Betty, the Betty La Branch Agency, $50. We thank you for your contributions or your donations, rather. And I'd entertain a motion.
Recommend we approve and accept the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a second discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Presentation, item 10. Presentation and consideration of written communications and petitions. The first is a letter from Monte Bohannon at the Music Hall requesting permission to close Chestnut Street on Saturday, May 31st, 2008, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. to hold their sale, to hold their on-sale date for the next season. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
The city manager with power?
Do we have a second? It would be moved to the city manager with power. That's the motion. We have a second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. The next is a letter from John Wright, Granite State Pedicabs, requesting permission to operate a pedal-driven tricycle with a two-passenger cab, a pedicab, for rides around the city. Do we have a motion to refer this to the city manager with power?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous.
Your honor, if I might, Mr. Wright, I'll call you tomorrow. You can give me a call. We can set up a time to discuss this. Thank you.
Next, we have item C, a letter from Cindy Blanchett, Portsmouth City Soccer Club, requesting permission to offer local businesses to hang banners at Larry Field during the soccer season, mid-August to mid-November. Do we have a motion?
Your honor, if I might.
If you please.
What we've done is, in the past, what we did ask the planning board to look at this, I think we did two years ago, with the baseball. There are a couple of options you can have. You could have this referred to another agency, such as the, to the, to the planning board with a report back, or you could refer it to me with power, and I can discuss with them about the types of signs, size of signs, and what we would require, and I could report back to the city council. So you have two choices there, however you want to do it.
Does anyone care to make a motion? Counsel Dwyer.
Well, I guess it should go, I would make a motion that it go to the planning board, and with the idea that there may be alternatives to hung banners for advertising, to consider what alternatives there would be, so that the report would include the request, but also to recommend some alternatives.
We have motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Counsel Kennedy. Discussion. Counsel Kennedy.
I'd also like to, while we're doing all this, to also look at and research when the banners were removed last time.
Now, with who in particular, counselor? We have Little League and we have the Babe Ruth League.
I think if the banners were said they were going to be removed at a certain time.
I don't know which ones you're talking about, counselor. Which ones?
The public comment session. The question he got.
So he's, you're talking about the ones that may have been at Larry Field? I can look at that and see.
Just investigate and find out what.
Sure, but I know that the Little League banners came down right after when they were supposed to come down. They're both at, at the Plains Field and at, in the Heights, and those have come down. But I'll check to see when. I don't know if I can reconstruct that, to be honest with you, but I will, I will try.
Okay, we have a motion. Second. Discussion. Counsel Reynolds.
Another point of discussion. I guess I certainly support the motion, particularly Counsel Dwyer's thought about the planning board, rather than considering the thing straight up or down, talking about, you know, what are alternatives to advertising? I mean, I know, you know, Mr. Horgan has spoken before against this. On the other hand, we've authorized it for other sports. He talks about, you know, allowing advertisers to use city space. It's not so much, really, it's not for them. It's about revenue for these leagues that operate, and money's tight, and they need money to operate, and that's why they go and ask businesses to sponsor. So that's where it's coming from. It's not about us making city property available for advertising that, you know, that businesses want to use. It's the other way around, and it's kind of a civic pride thing, too. You know, businesses sponsor leagues, and they, so, I don't know, we have to sort of get at this from a city standpoint and figure out how to meet the needs of these, how we can enable these sports leagues to thrive, and other activities to thrive, you know, while respecting the neighborhood concerns.
One of the things, just so.
City manager?
For background, the way these started were, the tagging was a common way of these leagues raising money, and there was concern voiced in the community about Little League tagging at various places, and the youngsters tagging at those places.
Right.
This eliminated the tagging aspect, and which is a very positive thing, to a certain degree. So I think, you know, you're gonna have to weigh both of those, because the tagging issue was a real issue for youngsters being at locations.
Right, or the alternatives, you know, kids going door-to-door selling candy, kids having car washes, you know, there's all these alternatives.
Okay, further discussion on this particular item.
I think Laura was first.
Laura, Counsel Petalakis.
Thank you. This would be all three fields downtown, right? Because this is alumni field.
Well, certainly, it's something that we'd want to try to, to isolate, to see what they're talking about. I think the letter isn't really as specific as it should be. And certainly, it's what we decide. I mean, if there's a certain area that the council feels comfortable with, and we talked to the planning board about it. I know what happened the last time when we came back, if I recall, planning board, when Babe Ruth asked for this, this ability to put up signs, believed there was a pilot program that allowed for two signs for them, and they were able to put those up. And then, every year, they have to reapply. There has to be a certain size of the sign. It is a whole, it was a whole criteria that was given by the planning board. It was the number of items, and when it was supposed to come, go up, and when they were supposed to come down. And I will check when, last year, they came down.
Thank you.
Counsel Novlin-Claver.
Having been involved with this in the past, I always wondered why they couldn't put the signs up just for the game, and then take them right back down. I, that was just always a suggestion that I had made, so, throw it out for what it's worth.
Additional discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Item D, a letter from John Ducey, Northern Tier Real Estate Acquisition and Development, LLC, requesting to plant five or six eastern red cedar juniper evergreen bushes on the sidewalk in front of 172 Hanover Street.
Your honor, it would be our belief that we should refer this to the Trees and Greenery Committee for a report back. This is, the Trees and Greenery Committee are looking at all the downtown trees, and there may be some concerns they have with these types of trees.
So the motion would be to refer it to the city manager with power?
No, no.
To the Trees and Greenery Committee for a report back to our, to the city council.
Correct. So moved.
Second. Second. Discussion. Counsel Dwyer.
Well, the clarification, I looked at that area today, and of course, the sidewalk goes right up to the building, and the diagram, as shown, shows them in pots. So I think we need to clarify whether the intent is to place them in pots, or to actually take up the sidewalk and plant them.
And again, with regard, that's, that's an excellent question. We discussed that internally. We have concerns with that, from a, from a keeping the sidewalk clear in the wintertime, a number of issues we have. So we'd like to discuss that with the Trees and Greenery Committee.
Noted. Further discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Item E, a letter from School Administrative Unit 50, supporting the school board's proposed 2008, 2009 budget. The proper motion would be to accept it and place it on file.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Next, we move on to reports and communications from city officials, the city manager in this case.
Your honor?
Yes. Counsel Reynolds.
At this point, could I make a motion?
I think you missed one, your honor. I'm sorry, I missed one.
You did actually miss.
Letter Ling Landley and Kristi Cardoso, thank you for pointing that out, Atlantic Heights Community Garden Committee, requesting to create a community garden project in the Atlantic Heights neighborhood on the city property located on Bedford Way. What we did, your honor, is provide a, an aerial map for you, just to show you where it would be, in the blue area. We don't know exactly what, what area they're talking about, but we believe this is the land that they are referring to, and there is city land there. Certainly, we can, if the council decides that it's appropriate, we can work with them if you'd like. So if that were so, we would move it to the city manager with power to do as he described.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. I neglected to hear discussion on that, but I didn't see anyone for the burning. Okay. Next, we go on to the report of the city manager.
Sorry. Could I interrupt with a motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of considering an item that is not on the agenda, but that we heard about from a number of speakers at public comment?
We have a motion to suspend the rules, reminding the council that it requires a vote of six, a two-thirds vote, in order to pass. And it is, it takes precedence, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Do we need discussion on the suspension of the rules, or the motion that we're going to hear after that? Well, it doesn't look like we need discussion on this. So with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous.
And now, a motion, which I necessarily have to make up on the spot, but the motion would be something like, move to instruct the city attorney, as per the request that we heard, I think it was a very articulate presentation by the speakers at public comment, to instruct the city attorney to, tell the court at tomorrow's hearing on the injunction, that the city is interested in seeing this dock preserved, and does want, basically supports the injunction in order to buy some more time, prevent the destruction of the asset, so that we can explore the possibility of preserving it.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. I'm gonna refer to the city attorney.
I will.
As to what the status is, and what this means, and where this may take us.
This is an issue with a long history. In the beginning, there was darkness. The, the situation arises from the fact that Fernall Court is shown on city tax maps as running to the water. Sometime in the, probably in the 1960s, and probably Bunny Kensh, former city employee, someone without approval from the city, and with no permits of any kind, constructed a dock on one half, the left half, as you're looking towards the water, of the Paper Street portion of Fernall Court. The city has consistently taken the position, as you heard, that Fernall Court is public property to the water, and the city council actually reinforced that very significantly about two years ago, by getting a deed from the people that own, that would own the underlying fee on the right half of Fernall Court, going to the water, the McLeod's. The dock, however, is built on the other half, adjacent to property now owned by Becky Harvey. The city's consistent position, and actually a vote of the city council in 1998, was that the city has no interest in that dock. If the dock belongs to anyone, determined the council in 1998, it belongs to Becky Harvey. And the council said at that time that it was not interested in removing the dock itself, but that if Becky Harvey, that Becky Harvey controlled the dock, and that any arrangement with regard to that dock should be between the, well, then it was the Harvys, now it's Becky Harvey, and whoever wants to keep the dock, the neighborhood, and that the city was not interested in the issue. That, there has, I mean, I have a file on this dock that is almost as high as the dock itself. The, my view has always been analyzing the Paper Street issues, that if anyone owns that dock, it is Becky Harvey, because it is on, you know, this gets kind of complicated, but if the, the extension of the Paper Street, where nothing is built, is, we believe, subject to a public servitude. We don't have a deed to Fernall Court. The public servitude operates like an easement. The owner of the underlying property and the fee on Fernall Court would be whoever owns either side of the middle, the budding property owners. This leaves the McLeod's owning one side now, the Harvey's owning, or Becky Harvey owning the other. We got a deed from the McLeod's to guarantee public access to the water there, no matter what, regardless of how the Paper Street issue is analyzed, because we have a deed from the McLeod's, we have assured the neighborhood that they can get to the water, and it's used sort of as a community beach, and they will be able to do that forever guaranteed because of actions of prior city council. The dock is far more complicated. We do not have such a deed from Becky Harvey, and with regard to the existing dock itself, I am very leery. Number one, it is not built to any codes or standards. It was totally built without permits. It has been improved in recent years, like on weekends or at night or something, again, with no permits. You know, and it's sort of our job to require permits for things. So I'm always uncomfortable about the nighttime improvements, or the Saturday improvements, or whatever. It is certain that those improvements are, again, not consistent with any codes. There's no railings, for example. This leads me to have great liability concerns. All, you know, this dock is in very shallow water, and at low tide, it's over mud. And all you would have to do is have one person take one headfirst dive off this dock at the wrong time, and, you know, the liability is immense. You can see that, I'm sure. So I have that concern. I also have always had the concern, and I believe prior city councils have had the concern, about whether the entire city, you know, people that live in Elwin Park, should be bearing the burden, or the risk of this, of owning this dock or controlling this dock, when really, it's one neighborhood that uses of owning this dock or controlling this dock, when really, it's one neighborhood that uses it. That's a policy decision, obviously, it's your policy decision, but it's a concern.
Can you, can you, can you please allow him to continue, and then we'll, if you have a question, when, when you're done with your explanation?
Certainly, I just, certainly, I know we're short on time, so.
Now, I think there's general agreement about these concerns among myself, and even among the members of the neighborhood, and they have proposed some different ways to try and deal with it, and the primary one being something like this. If they could get Becky Harvey to agree, or maybe to give the city an easement, like the McLeod's gave the city, so that it became clear that the city controlled the area where the dock is located, then after that happened, the city could then lease, or rent, or license, or somehow make a further agreement between the city and the neighborhood association, such that the neighborhood association would control the dock. And they, and the, the way that arrangement would further work is, to address the liability concerns, the association would buy insurance. Now, there are some problems with that, not the least of which is, it requires maintenance, the agreement requires maintenance from the city. You know, periodically, somebody in City Hall is going to have to say, I got to read that insurance, and make sure it's still in effect, and, and covers what we need covered. It turns out also that while the city's normal insurance that we get for any leased properties is $2 million in liability coverage, it turns out, from discussions with the neighborhood, that there's a big break in what it costs them, between $1 million and $2 million. And they can afford $1 million, but maybe can't afford $2 million, our normal amount. And this bothers me a little bit, because of, I think the liability risk is actually much greater for a dock than it is for a lot of things in which we get $2 million. We get $1 million in liability for a sandwich board sign downtown. The dock somewhere on a mud flat strikes me as a greater risk, and probably we should secure greater insurance. In the end, these are all, a lot of these are policy decisions, obviously, for the city council, but past city councils have desired to stay away from the problem. And, and that's really where we are tonight. The last vote of a council was probably that vote in 98, directly on the point, saying, it's, it's not, uh, something we want to be involved in. However, you know, the council's the policymaking body, you are, and whatever you choose to do.
Before, Councilor Reynolds, I'd like to recognize you, you're next, and, but, but I want to make sure that we exactly understand what the motion is, because we've not always had our best success when we haven't done that. So, can you give us your best?
Yes, I can.
Reading of that?
Will you instruct the city clerk, uh, the city attorney to tell the court at the hearing tomorrow that, that our, that, I'm sorry, that the interest in... To see the interest in the dock is preserved, and the city supports the injunction.
Okay. So let's start with the, the motion. If, if the motion is for the, the city to support the interest in the dock and support the injunction, I guess, I'm just going to have to ask the city attorney before we get to further discussion, so that we make sure we have a motion that, that does what it purports to do. What interest? I mean, do we, hearing that motion, I, I'm not going to rule it out of order without further advice, but I think we need to be precise about what it is we're moving, if we're going to have this discussion. City attorney, do you care to speak to the motion the way it's currently worded?
The, what I understood is, well, you know, the motion, requested motion, from Attorney Stella, I think it is, was that the, the city council support the injunction.
But what is the injunction, what exactly?
The injunction, well, oh, here we are. The Rebecca Harvey, through her attorney, Peter Loughlin, has advised numerous parties, including the city, that they would like to tear down the dock. They cannot purchase an insurance for it themselves, and they have problems trying to build a conforming dock, more to the center of their property, with this dock still viewed as being their dock. So, so they've said, we'd like to tear that dock down, so A, we don't have the liability, and B, we can build another dock. The injunction is to, is a request of the court to order that they not do that, that Rebecca Harvey not tear the dock down. Now, tomorrow would be on a temporary basis, and if it, if that injunction was granted, it would order Rebecca Harvey not to tear that dock down until there is such time to have an evidentiary hearing on the issue. So the motion would have the effect of instructing me to go to court tomorrow and tell the judge that the city council would like to see the temporary injunction granted.
Now, Councilor Reynolds, we're going to get to you in just a second, but I want to make sure that we understand how closely drawn the motion is or isn't, and that's my concern. So, we could conceive, if, if that's the way we understand the motion, and we'll have to make sure that we clarify it, that that means that we have not taken a position in chief as regards our ownership, we are merely saying to the court that we would like to see the injunction granted. Is that your intent?
That is indeed my intent.
All right, now, now, now.
But, that is my intent.
All right, I'm going to further inquire then. But there's nothing within the intent of which you offer that talks about, I mean, we have a whole plethora of legal issues to consider as regards ownership.
Right.
Okay, now that I've clarified it that far, I'd ask the city attorney again, how does A affect B? And, and do we, you know, if the city council were to give you that instruction, I think the city council needs to understand, if the instruction merely were to say, we support the injunction, and say nothing further, what then?
Well, obviously, I...
I think the council needs to, they may know what they're going to do, but I think the council needs to know.
Obviously, if the council issues an instruction, I will follow it.
Right, but what I'm asking is, could you tell us what the legal effect would, could be?
I do think that a court would be affected, the judge would be affected by such a council vote.
The question I'm asking is, if the council were to so vote, and if the court were to hear the injunction, and then make a ruling, and let's say that it was temporarily granted pending further procedure, where does that leave the city, and what happens to us, in terms of what we would have to further do?
Well, my, my position, and the council's position, prior city councils, is very clear that we claim no interest in that dock. It is Rebecca Harvey's dock. And unless the council tells me to take a different position than that, that's the position of prior city councils. So, I would say to the court, if asked, well, your honor, the city does not claim any interest in that dock, we believe it belongs to Rebecca Harvey, but the city council has instructed me to tell you that the city council supports the temporary injunction.
Councilor Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for, for all that. You clarified that my intent is, is narrowly drawn, to simply do as we were requested, to have the city support the injunction and buy more time. However, I did want to follow up, because I, I also heard our constituents ask that the city, and do something else, and Bob just said, it has been the city's position that the dock belongs to Rebecca Harvey. I heard us be asked that, and I think it's reasonable, given what you said about the mystery, the mysterious origin of the dock, and the mysterious nature of the maintenance of the dock, that it doesn't belong to Rebecca Harvey, that the dock is sort of owned by, no, we were asked, and I would like to say that the city supports the injunction, and that the city takes the position that it's not Rebecca Harvey's dock, it's, you know, it's a dock.
Okay.
But we don't claim any ownership to it. I don't want the city...
Point of order, may it be?
Yes, please.
Is, uh, Mr. Councilor Reynolds, are you trying now to amend the motion, or change the motion you originally made that was so succinctly clarified?
You know, like I said, I made a motion that was not scripted, it was on the spot, and I'm very open and desirous of us tuning it up, so that it does exactly what we want it to do, and nothing that we don't want. And so what I want is to support the injunction.
Can we just discuss the motion on the floor, then?
Let's, the motion on the floor, and, and I'm going to ask the city clerk to read it again, because while he indicated that we clarified his intent, I'm not 100% certain that we did. So can you, can you try to read it one more time, so that we can be certain? And then I'm going to have to make sure that we get this right.
Do you want me to read the original motion?
Am I not direct that the maker of a motion can modify the motion, specifically, I mean, specifically since it was made?
Should I answer that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Technically, once a motion is made and seconded, it is said that the motion belongs to the entire council, and the maker no longer controls the motion.
Okay. So, I think we need to go back to what the original motion is, notwithstanding our clarifying discussion.
Move to instruct the city attorney to tell the court at the hearing tomorrow that the interest in the dock is to preserve and support the injunction.
Okay. I, I'm going to rule that out of order as being unclear. So I think we need to get, because it doesn't say what interest, whose interest, and I know what your, I think I understand what your intent is. Now, I'm going to just go a little bit further in trying to clarify this. If we were to offer, if a motion were to be offered, that said, and I want to hear what the city attorney has to say to this, if a motion were offered to say that we instruct the city, we instruct the city attorney to say, we, we support the temporary injunction, okay? Now, city council, if we were to make that motion, then we get back into the larger issue at a later point in time, perhaps, of what is our position as regards the ownership, in light of the long history, legal opinion, et cetera, et cetera, a separate question, okay? Now, I would like the city attorney just to weigh in on that, if he could, so that we can be sure that we have the distinction right, if there is one.
I do not believe that the city owns that dock.
Okay. So, understand that if we offer the motion that we support the injunction, we're doing that in the face of being advised that the city attorney says it is his opinion that we do not own the dock. Okay. So now, let me ask the city attorney, if I could. If we don't own the dock, but we support an injunction, a temporary injunction, what result, and where does it go, possibly?
Obviously, that's, obviously, that's entirely in the discretion of the court. I do believe that the judge, because it's impossible, either right now, or tomorrow morning, to thoroughly vet all these issues, I think the judge gives the council's vote significant weight.
Does the council's vote, in any way, given that it would be limited, if it were to be offered for that limited purpose, then where, where do you recommend the council go from here, in terms of figuring out what its ultimate position would be?
Well, thus far, we're not a party in this case that's going on tomorrow, although I'm advised by Attorney Stella that we may soon be a party to the case, which will affect, I think, the way we approach the issues, obviously.
Well, I have, if we, if we vote, and I hate doing this in an open city council meeting, normally, if we negotiate, we do this appropriately in a closed session, but I have to ask, if we vote just for the temporary injunction, do you believe that that in any way limits what position we might take in the future, should it be ultimately contrary, or should it affirm the position that you assert that, that we don't own it?
Well, it would need, that kind of a vote would need to be explained in some kind of a logical way, and I'm not sure that I know what that logical way would be.
Even as regards the, supporting the temporary injunction?
Right, because the city council would be saying, even though we've claimed no interest in this dock for at least 10 years, and we've said it's Rebecca Harvey's dock, we feel, as the council talk, and we feel that the judge should not let Rebecca Harvey demolish the dock, that we have said she owns. It's hard for me to find the logic in there.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Pendelac.
Yes. First off, the dock has been there for 40 years, and the city of Portsmouth has known it. They have never attempted to turn it, to tear it down. So, it should be city property. Secondly, we said that the water went down, that the road went down to the water, correct? And that's where the dock is. But the idea of it is that we are taking away something from a community that can be resolved if they can get together and do it. And I don't think it's right to, she never had permission to build that dock, it was built by people down there. She never got permission from DES to do it. So I think we should take some kind of a stand and resolve this problem. It's been going on for 40 years. And I mean, we never have attempted to go in and say, this is a big liability to us, and, and pull it out. And it's been a liability for 40 years.
Ron, I move that we ask the city attorney to support the injunction to preserve the dock temporarily.
Second. Okay, now we have a new motion, more closely drawn. I ruled your motion out of order, so it's off the table.
Fair enough.
All right. Discussion as regards the assistant mayor's motion. Councilor Spear.
I'm having trouble supporting the motion because of the reasons explained by the city attorney. It doesn't seem logical to me that we can, as a policy, claim that we have no interest in the dock, the Harveys own the dock, and at the same time, suggest that there should be an injunction prohibiting this interaction between, that we have no interest in. So, for that reason, I'll vote against the motion. I have one question for the city attorney. And this, to me, the land ownership question, it's so complicated, no one, you don't own land, and there's multiple levels of ownership. In this case, the city has, on the Harvey side of the Paper Street. I'm going to try to describe the ownership, and you can tell me if I'm right. We have a right of way to go down, that's not correct. Do we own, that's correct, basically, that's correct. If we wanted to, do we own the land outright? Would, if we don't own the land outright, what did the McLeod's do when they gave us a deed? Do we, and can you explain that a little bit, and I have a follow-up question?
Sure. Paper Street issues can become extremely complex, and, and really incapable of being answered without litigation. To try and answer Paper Street questions, what needs to be done is a complete title search of all properties abutting the Paper Street. A determination needs to be made of exactly when and how the Paper Street came into existence, and, and a historical review needs to be made to determine what level of public use of the Paper Street has occurred, and what level of public maintenance of the Paper Street has occurred. All these have a bearing in answering the question. Because of that, and because we have so many Paper Streets in the city, we have administrative policy, in how we approach these complicated questions. And administrative policy is this: if a Paper Street shows on a tax map, then because all that work I just talked about hasn't been done, or can't be done, or if a Paper Street shows on a tax map, our opening position, a rebuttable presumption, is that the city owns that Paper Street. And we, the, the presumption can be rebutted by someone who does the title searches, does the historical researches, and presents us with evidence showing that either the city doesn't own it, or the city has just an easement, or a public servitude, or I think what you call a right of way, or the city has no interest at all. And in many circumstances, it turns out to be that even though the Paper Street shows on tax maps, the city in the end has no legal interest, either because of the lapse of time, or the failure to accept the dedication, or the variety of reasons. Now, in the situation where there has been a Paper Street of, of the public servitude or the easement kind, as distinguished primarily, where there are Paper Streets in which the city actually truly owns the land, we have deeds to some of these Paper Streets. We own them, flat out, and would own them forever. But the more common type of Paper Street is, because of a dedication and acceptance, such as your recording of a plan, sale of a lot, it gets kind of complicated. But because of dedication and acceptance, the most common type of Paper Street in the city is one in which we have a public servitude, which is just a special kind of easement, over the area shown as a Paper Street. Now, when that kind of Paper Street exists, if it expires by operational law, which it used to be able to expire up until of sometime in the late 60s, those kind of Paper Streets would expire if they weren't accepted by the city over a 20-year period. On the expiration of that kind of a Paper Street, what happens is, the Paper Street is divided down the middle between the abutters. And, and also, even if it doesn't expire, that kind of easement Paper Street, what we have is an easement to build a road, or for public access, but the ground underneath it, the land underneath it, is actually owned by the abutters down the middle. So it's, it's application of those kind of principles that give Rebecca Harvey, as the owner of the property on one side, a greater interest, or a greater stake in the land where this dock is built, than anyone else. Now, you could tell, even from my brief discussion, that, hey, this is complicated stuff. You could have a long trial, and, you know, come out of different... could have a long trial and, you know, come out a different way. But in 1998, when we examined these things at great length with the city council, the conclusion that the council reached at that time was, it's Rebecca Harvey's dock. And we didn't want any interest because of the liability concerns, et cetera.
Okay, we have a motion duly seconded. Thank you for the additional explanation, additional discussion. Counsel Smith.
Thank you. Just a question for the city attorney. Let's, for, take, for instance, that the dock becomes ownership of the city. Would it then become up to the city's responsibility to bring that dock up to code, adding railings and safety and so forth as well?
There, well, first off, just let me say, there's two ways that the dock could become the city dock. Number one, similar to the McLeod's, Rebecca Harvey could give a deed to the city, and the council could accept that deed. And that would make the dock the city dock. The second is, there could be a trial. And at the end of a trial, someone could say, "That's the city's dock." Those are the only two ways I know of. Now, if either of those things happened and ended up being the city's dock, then obviously it becomes the city's responsibility to, you know, the city cannot own a substandard dock. It has to be brought up to code, and it would be the city's responsibility.
Counsel Dwyer.
I don't know if this is an amendment or not to the motion that, that Jack made, but a way that I'm thinking of this, in supporting an injunction, but certainly not, I mean, it's pretty clear to me that we simply cannot claim that we own that. I mean, that, the name for that is eminent domain, right? And as our two, as our biggest advocate against eminent domain, I don't think the city can simply claim that we own that. I think that's been made clear. I can see, however, supporting an injunction with this logic, that by doing that, we are supporting a neighborhood association of the city as it further works out what might be possible. We don't know if it's possible or not, but along the lines that Attorney Sullivan was just talking, that our support of the injunction is as supportive of a neighborhood association as it attempts to work out something for its neighborhood. Now, that may just be splitting hairs, and, you know, according to what you said before above, I don't know if that's either an amendment to the motion, or if that's just a way I can satisfy myself that I can vote for such a thing. But I think we're all pretty clear now that we simply can't claim that we own that dock.
Right, that's legislative history right now.
That was the intent of my motion, how you succinctly put it. It is to give the neighborhood association just some, some time to work something out, which I think has been the request all along. It wasn't not the intent that we buy the dock or own the dock.
So our support is for one of our neighborhood associations.
Our support is to support the neighborhood association.
Without, Counsel Kennedy.
Call the order. Call a vote.
Can we take a vote?
Call the question.
Or call the question, sorry.
Counsel Clever, sorry.
I guess, you know, this, we all know this wasn't on the agenda. I'm a little uncomfortable because I feel like I don't know that much about it. I know we did get a packet months ago, I read the packet, but it's something that I haven't, it's not fresh in my mind right now. And I also feel that it would be, it would be wonderful if the other side could be here. We're hearing one side of the story, we're really not hearing the other side of the story from the representatives from that side. So I feel uncomfortable voting on the motion, period, because I feel like I just don't have enough information, and I'm, I'm not getting both sides of the story. We're getting a pretty clear message from our city attorney that the land belongs to a specific person, and I guess my feeling is, if I own something, I should be allowed to do whatever I want with it. I, I just feel uncomfortable because I feel like I don't have enough information.
Counsel, Counsel Kennedy has called the question, and I, and I would very much like to, go ahead.
I just want to echo what Counsel Clever said, the, about the other side being heard, and as far as the, the, as far as I can tell, the only position that the neighbors have taken is that eventually the ownership of the dock will be by the city. And that's the mechanism by which they're hoping to get the injunction permanently stayed, permanently, whatever you call it. So, for those two reasons, I still feel that I should vote against this motion.
Thank you, Counsel Spear. Counsel Smith.
Thank you. I too am very uncomfortable with this. I really think that, at the end, when it does become the city, it's gonna also become our responsibility for not only the liability of it, but the, the maintenance and rebuild of this as well. I will support the motion for only the purpose to allow, hopefully, some piece of, that they can negotiate it. But I'm really hoping that the association also take into respect of not only the liability costs, and I think it has to be more than $1 million. Somebody dives off that dock and, and you have an issue down there, it's gonna cost more than a million dollars. I also don't think it's, if you're gonna take this on, you're also gonna have to do your own fundraising on how to bring that dock up to code, assuming that it becomes city. I, I just, I won't support it in, in any other terms. So I will vote, I'll support the motion at this point, but unless something, we can have something very strong coming back to us the other way, I just think it's too much of a liability on, on the city.
Thank you. I'm gonna, Counsel Penelakis.
Yes, the reason that I support this is that I think we owe it to them to at least give them the chance to negotiate with Mrs. Harvey. And if they can't, they can't, but we should at least give them a chance to do that.
Okay, I, I just wanna, we've had the question called, we've had some discussion. I have one more, I need one more bit of advice I think that we might need from the city attorney, so that we understand. Given the manner in which it was expressed, the councils that support it indicate, they don't indicate that they believe they own it, they don't indicate that, that they believe the city owns this property, they merely want to vote to support this injunction in the first instance, okay? Now, can you tell us, and is it appropriate for you to tell us at this point in time, if that in any way, regardless of what the position has been in the last 10 years, creates any, any, any problem for us of consistency in ownership, given that the, the motion is really merely to support the injunction?
Well, we haven't been sued yet, although I think we will be. My opportunity, if I get one at all tomorrow, would be, just be to tell the judge what the city council has said tonight, and if the motion passes, I will do that as faithfully as I possibly can.
How, how long? Well, is there any likely further ramification that we might see in the event we were to take that action? Or is it?
Yeah, I, I do think it creates inconsistency in council actions.
I agree.
And it has to be explained.
How long would the injunction would be for?
We need a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
There's no real way to tell, it would be until the court could find time to set up a full trial, and the parties could have time to do whatever discovery or trial preparation is necessary. It would certainly, I'm sure, be the end of the summer or something.
I, I probably wrongfully asked for motions to suspend the rules, which I got and was seconded, and I'm gonna ask that it would, if you would be kind enough to withdraw those. And the reason I do that is, I don't think under the circumstances, without everyone, everyone being present here, it probably makes sense to have one side speak if another side's not present. So I, I would ask if out of courtesy, someone would withdraw their motion to suspend. And, and withdrawal was second.
I'll withdraw.
Maybe nobody seconded it. So it dies for lack.
What was that?
Dies for lack of a second, either way.
Oh, okay.
All right. So now, we're to the motion in chief, and we're gonna have to vote. Any further discussion? Do we need a roll call vote?
We need to read the motion.
Let's read the motion. That'd be the motion offered by the Assistant Mayor.
We should have a roll call.
I just have to go back. Move to ask the city attorney to support the injunction to...
Preserve the dock temporarily.
I'm sorry, to preserve the dock temporarily.
To preserve the dock temporarily? Okay.
Yes, that was my exact words.
Okay. Are we clear that those are the words? Everybody's ready to vote? Roll call vote.
Assistant Mayor Blaylock?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan Cleaver?
No.
Counsel Dwyer?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Spear?
No.
Counsel Reynolds?
Yes.
Counsel Penelakis?
Yes.
Mayor Farini?
No.
Six to three passes.
Motion carries six to three. Back on the agenda. Good night. Next, we have reports and communications from city officials. We've already, I don't, I can't recall now whether we voted on the tax anticipation, I believe we did. Next is the letter from John Ducey, which we read under another portion of the agenda, so now...
We're under the city manager's items.
We're under the city manager's items, which require action.
Can I make a motion to suspend the rules to go past 10 o'clock?
Motion made for suspension to go past 10.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, depending upon how we do, if we need another recess, folks, don't, don't hesitate to sing out. Go forward, please, if you would.
Thank you, Your Honor. The first item under my name is request from the school department to establish work sessions on a quarterly basis for education issues. There's a letter from Dr. Lister asking for these quarterly work sessions. What I've done is, I've taken the liberty of proposing September 15th and December 15th for the quarterly work sessions, and then, when the new calendar is established, we can, we can establish those, those work sessions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mayor.
Counsel Dwyer.
I, I like the idea very much of a closer relationship with the school board. I was, I'm just a little confused that they're work sessions, because that normally suggests that we are together, making some kinds of decisions. Now...
That was their exact wording in their letter.
I'm, and, you know, I'm all for it, but I'm, I think that we need to really under, they need to understand what we would be doing. Whether it's a report back occasionally, or whatever, I think that's absolutely fine. The fact that we would have quarterly work sessions to be working things out with our school board would be a pretty unique undertaking. So before we establish work sessions with all that implies, I wonder if we need to ask the city manager just to have some additional discussion and clarify what, what's really intended.
Maybe we can have a work session with them to discuss.
No work session. No, just kidding. Levity noted for the record. Just a comment, I mean, work sessions don't always, I think work sessions can be what we want them to be, and I, I guess I'd ask the city manager if you...
It's up to the council. I, I just, I mean, if you want me to get better clarification, I can, I can, I can do that. I mean, that's up to you, I can do, I can certainly send them a letter asking...
I just, quarterly seems fairly frequently given...
Well, I mean, I, I'm gonna just, I'm gonna take the privilege of the chair and make a comment. Counsel Kennedy requested that we do the overtime, in part, among others, to look at overtime this evening. If the other departments have, do they have provision that has a quarterly work session in the statute as well?
Well, you mean the charter?
You mean the charter.
There, there is one, but we satisfy that through the, the financial reports that are made.
I understand, so, but the point would be that it's opportunity for regular inquiry.
I mean, the other way to look at it is that you could probably set something up quarterly where you have all three departments, I mean, I, I, I'm just trying to, you know, think this out a little bit more, where you, you really deal with police, fire, and schools, and you actually, you are the ones that set the agenda for the work session. So for example, you know, half hour would be with the school board, 15 minutes with the, or half hour with the fire department, depending if there was anything you needed to discuss with them.
Well...
I mean, that's, but it's a, I mean, you could table this, and I could go and talk to the, to the superintendent and find out a little bit more what he has in mind.
Or we could ask, motion to table, I don't know, is there a motion pending? Did anyone make the motion?
There is a motion pending.
Anyone did make the motion? So, motion to table, that takes precedent, and then we'll perhaps direct him to Counsel Kennedy.
We need a second for that.
We, we need a second for the motion to table.
I'm seconding to motion to table, and I think the clarification needs to come with, personally, I, I don't have a need to do the school board's job. So if we have a session, I want to know what they're looking for, what they...
If I might, we're gonna make that a motion. Motion to table requires voting without discussion, so we're gonna vote to get that other one. That's okay, then we're gonna go right back to you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, Counsel Kennedy.
I would just, I would just request that we have an agenda of what we need to discuss, and I'm not sure quarterly, I think that's pretty frequent, and unless there's a major issue that we want to discuss, like the middle school or something like that, but I think that needs to be brought up.
Perhaps a report back from the city manager in the first instance?
Well, what I'll do is, I'll, I'll talk to him, and I'll indicate him. I, I think I hear the sense that if you want a work session, there's a reason for a work session, send us a letter and say, "Let's have a work session, and here are the reasons." Is that pretty much the essence of what I've heard?
If Counsel Kennedy would be so kind as to say, "So moved."
So moved.
Second, anyone second that? I seconded it myself, I can't do that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's, okay, I got it.
Did you do that with another motion?
There was, there was a motion to table on the floor.
No, we tabled it. We voted the motion to table unanimous. We voted the table.
There was no motion, he was just clarifying, if I might, Your Honor, wasn't it a clarification?
Yes, yes.
I made the motion prior to, so how about if I go...
What was your motion?
My motion was to...
To set him up.
Was to set him up.
But then it was tabled.
But then there was a motion to table.
But then there was a motion to table, which...
We never voted on that motion, correct?
Right, but now we have a new motion to...
There was no motion.
It was, it was your motion, we moved to table it, it was voted on and tabled.
The mayor was making commentary, I believe.
I was. And then, right, and then Counsel Kennedy was actually offering what it is, she might like the city manager to get back from the school department as to what would be appropriate, from the school department. And, and then she said, "So moved." That became a motion.
Then we actually voted.
And then we voted on it.
Now I'm confused.
Okay.
Wow.
So was it a motion?
Yes, it was.
Yes.
Pass 10-20.
He's got, the city manager is going to inquire of the school department as to what it is they would like to do in these and, and report back.
No, I, I don't think, okay, I thought, I clarified that I was gonna indicate to the school board that the intent of the council was, if you need a work session, ask for the work session, and put an agenda together for what you want the work session for.
And Counsel Kennedy made the motion, it was seconded, and we voted. Do you care to...
No, I, I don't think I did make a motion, I think I was just, I think it was so moved, and that's why I was kind of confused, why I was saying that. I think I was just trying to get a discussion of what I was looking for.
That's fine. Let's, let's do something dispositive, my apologies.
Well, the table and motion...
The tabling motion passed, we needed, let's say the other one, Counsel Kennedy indicates it was not a motion. My apologies once again, let's have a motion.
For what?
Well, do we need no motion for the city manager to table that inquiry? It's been tabled, we need no further motion on this item. Again, on to the next issue. Thank you, Counsel Smith.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. The next item is request to allow us to bring back a first reading, an ordinance that would allow us to accept credit card payments.
Recommend the city council authorize first reading of, of an ordinance during June 2nd meeting.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second, Counsel Kennedy. Discussion.
I think this is terrific, I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, Counsel Smith. Counsel Kennedy.
I think if we're gonna do monthly water meters, we don't have a choice but to.
Sure.
I think it's a beginning.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, informational items.
Your Honor, before Judy Bland, the finance director, leaves after she waited so patiently for that vote, I just wanted to recognize her, because we did again win the financial reporting award, the city received notification that our comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year ending June 30, 2007 qualifies for the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. And this has been, we've had this since 1995, Judy is an integral part of making sure this happens. There were only eight communities in New Hampshire that have this for our CAFER, and there's only one, just remind you, only one, that has the excellence in government budgeting, and that's Portsmouth. So I, I think she deserves the credit for that.
Thank you.
And we're very pleased to continue this, this excellence. Thank you, Judy.
Thank you, congratulations.
That's all I have, unless there are questions for me, Your Honor.
Questions for the city manager. Hearing none. Hearing none. I'll go forward at this point. I have some appointments to be considered only, we won't be voting at this meeting. Ruth Griffin for reappointment to the Portsmouth Housing Authority. Christie Cardozo for appointment to the mayor's Blue Ribbon Citywide Neighborhood Steering Committee. James Melfi, reappointment to the mayor's Blue Ribbon Citywide Neighborhood Committee. William St. Laurent, reappointment to the mayor's Blue Ribbon Citywide Neighborhood Committee. Next, just note that the Memorial Day Parade and services is going to be this Monday, and parade begins at 1:00. For those of you who wanna march, who wanna be at Junkins and, Junkins and Pleasant at, I'm sorry, Junkins and Parrot at, at 12:30. And so we look forward to that service. We have a city council meeting, one scheduled for July, July 7, 2008. It had been the suggestion of, I believe the city manager and I had suggested that, given our, our current schedule, that we take one meeting in July, given vacations and such. And I have nothing further.
Do you want a motion to cancel our July 7 meeting and move it to a July 21st?
Yeah, my notes, I'm sorry, thank you, Ken.
I'll make that as a motion.
Second. Second, discussion. No discussion.
I will, I will not be here, I'll be at the Ontario County Fair showing cows.
Noted, Council Kennedy will be, fine. So we, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Okay, I am done. Councilor Smith and the Blue Ribbon Consolidation of Committees Committee.
Thank you very much, I'll be as brief as I can be with this. Basically, Council Panalakis and Council Dwyer and I got together and had a quick meeting of the, what we called the Restructuring Committee. Basically, we came down with some recommendations. One is, that is to ask the city attorney to work out the language on how these would happen, would be to create a new Parks, Recs, and Open Space Committee. That would assume the functions of the existing Rec Board, Pierce Island and Dogs Committee. And I, weren't we also, on the cemetery committees as well?
I think that's already been, we would recommend if it still existed.
If that still existed, that Cemetery Committee be part of that as well. The purpose of these recommendations is to consolidate the number of boards and committees that we have, as well as start lessening the amount of staff time that is take to maintain all of these. And it's starting to become more and more of an expense and burden on the city. As well as, it's pulling together and giving some, hopefully giving some teeth, and really no, no, pun intended, with the Dog Committee. To really sort of, some more work can get done and things that they're trying to get accomplished. As well as, it's been my experience that moving around through these boards sometimes can take several months because you have to wait for one person, one committee to have a meeting, and then they, another one has to be posted to get their feedback. So now, this would give an idea of, of pulling it together where decisions can be made.
Uh, yeah, city manager, please.
Your honor, may I make a suggestion that certainly we have the report here, but if we could, take them one at a time. So that, let's say we start with number one, because there's a lot of staff work, you know, and I would suggest that, you know, we take this first one because this seems to be the one that has the most prominence, and then work it through and talk to, you know, talk, go through the statutes, go through the ordinances, go through the charter, and make sure that we've covered all our bases here. And then, if we get through this one, then we, well, when we get through this one. Then if I can make a motion that we instruct the city attorney to begin how these things would be consolidated. Can we say number one?
Number one.
The number one. Once that one has been accomplished, the committee report automatically come back up for the, the next recommendations. Well, I guess, that's fine.
There was no motion pending, so that's a proper motion.
Second.
Do we have a second? We have a second?
Second.
Assistant Mayor?
Oh, I was just, well, I'm gonna make a comment, but it's, I guess, not really specifically in the motion for the first one. However, some of these recommendations, particularly the third one, I know. Trees and Greenery Committee is an advisory committee, whereas Conservation Commission is a quasi judicial, and I, I don't know if you can, I mean, that would be wise to combine those two?
I guess, I guess my point, your honor, was that we take, we start and start picking them off, and then when we got to that one, we'd go through all those pros and cons on that, and then let, and bring it to the council.
Well, I think if we're gonna get a report, and I'll just, if I may, I'm gonna just hand the gavel over to Assistant Mayor. With respect to the first, as we look at it, I think that if we get a report back from the city manager and staff as to what this will entail, and certainly we need an opportunity for those committees to get some input from those committees as well. I think that this will probably take a little bit of time for us to have the discussion and talk about it. The first one probably is the most complex, and, and there are a significant amount of moving parts to it that I think we, I will just suggest we all need to fully understand when we go forward doing this. And I'll, I'll take the gavel back and recognize...
I was just gonna recognize Council.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead.
That's right. First, I said, Council Kennedy, then Council Dwyer.
I'm not sure this is something that, knowing how tenuous dogs of, after 10 o'clock at night have been in the past council history, this is the time to bring this up in general. I have a hard time, when a time when I think it's great to get more people involved in government and not less. I have a problem with the fact that we don't have the data exactly how much city time, or I don't have it, maybe it's out there, is being used for committees. I have a problem putting a Dog Committee together with a Recreation Committee when there's, tends to be conflict in those areas. And I have a difficulty putting a Pierce Island Committee, when there's still, the committee that's designed is still trying to make it prove it's, it's not to a stagnant stage, it's not to a, a stage where we've kinda just said, now we're just gonna continue with the way we are. So I guess I'm having a hard time that we're bringing it up this late, and we really need to have some more data on each of these committees.
Well, Council Dwyer?
Clarifications on all of the recent points that have been made. First, the, there, there would be a difference between the wisdom of doing these and, and the legality of doing these. These have all been checked through with the city attorney to answer questions such as the Assistant Mayor raised, whether one can add an advisory function to a, a committee. So I wanna assure the rest of you first that the next steps here are things that have been identified under the advice of the city attorney. Whether it's wise to do them or not is something that would be discussion of, of this council, but all of these things are legally possible and, and would be an approach to do it. Second, our committee's intention was not that some of these things are done and therefore they're over with and we're putting them forth, but exactly for the reason that Council Kennedy raises, that some of these committees, that, that the whole idea of committees and why they save us time and why they move the city forward is to work things out within the committee's structure. Instead of one committee having one interest and another having a completely different interest and another having a completely different interest. That in fact, we should be working those things out within the committee's structure, which is part of our idea of combining the first couple of committees. And might I also say that our thinking was that some of these functions are really important, and we need to give them more importance than they have had by being divided into lots of small things. I can, the importance right now of recreation parks and open space, I would really like to see that elevated to metaphorically the level of the Land Use Board so that it really is staffed, it really is putting forth important things. It really is something that is working out issues to come before us. So just to clarify that, in the thinking and the talks that, that the three of us had, it was really not to diminish, but to actually raise up the issues in some of these cases.
Well, just point, a point for the chair to, to ask the city manager and make sure that we have it straight, what is these exactly we're gonna get back?
Well, what I think is gonna be just a document that would, would show you how this could be combined. It is not a document that is gonna say that, that, that will deal with the policy issue. As Council Kennedy brought up, that she has a policy issue as it relates to the combination of these, or the expansion, or the limitation as she sees it, to the amount of people that are serving. Or on the other hand, it will not answer the question that Councilor Dwyer and Councilor Smith has brought up. What we'll be bringing to you is a document that will be a policy discussion, pure and simple. It will be an ordinance that will, but before, the idea is before we go out and do four ordinances or five ordinances, let's just get past the first one. Because, you know, we don't know, you know, how this, you know, as, as Council Kennedy said, she made a good point, it's late tonight, to, to set the city attorney's office on doing all of these tonight is probably not a good idea. What we do is do number one, we put together the document, the ordinance that would create this, and then there would be a policy discussion from that. And this is not setting policy, this is just getting the ball rolling. This is just setting staff time. Not changing anything. This is really prioritizing staff time is what we're doing tonight, for number one only.
Council Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm gonna support the motion, I think it's a, I think it's a good idea, and I agree with Council Dwyer's explanation. And I think these recommendations have been well thought out by a couple of veteran counselors. I, I totally agree with the point that I think the city has not been as well served as it could have been by having small, sort of micro-subject committees meeting separately on different nights, different people having different discussions, and yet, there are conflicts between them and their related topics. And then what we end up with at the council is kind of a mess to sort out in public, I think we'd be better served. So, at any rate, what was just said, this is not the policy decision tonight, it's a step forward, so I'd like to support the motion.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Okay, Councilor Reynolds, Sagamore Creek Bridge.
Thank you, your honor. My, you all have in your packet a draft version of a letter, which, you know, I'm amenable to city manager tweaking, whatever. What I'd like to do is offer a motion to... Send this letter to our new Commissioner of Transportation from the city council, from the Portsmouth City Council. It asks him, the ask is in the last paragraph, to take an interim measure with respect to the safety of the Sagamore Creek Bridge, which, as we know, is going to be replaced wholesale, I believe.
Yeah, this is a city-owned bridge.
Okay. All right.
Well, let's, let's just get straight, Council Reynolds, you made a motion, Council Reynolds, that we send this letter to the Commissioner of Department of Transportation. If we can get a second, perhaps we can ask the city manager briefly to speak to it. We got a second.
Thanks.
Uh, yeah, city manager?
This is our bridge.
So were we to ask him for a recommendation or to do some work on the bridge since it is not his, we must maintain it, correct?
It's our bridge.
Okay. And why did you not tell me that when I gave you this letter?
I received a letter after a meeting, which I asked the mayor if, it was after the, the 12 o'clock time and the, for the receipt of the agenda. I, I did not receive this letter until Friday morning.
No.
Uh, Thursday morning, excuse me, Thursday morning, I was out at a meeting at the Pies Development Authority, I did not review this letter, I didn't have an opportunity to review this letter, it was after the 12 o'clock time the mayor allowed the letter in, I didn't have an opportunity to review it, and I'm sorry.
Okay. Fair enough, well, I'm a little embarrassed then.
Well, I, I'm sorry, I really did, I, I'm sorry in that I, I, I didn't get an opportunity to review this letter. It, it, I was at the Pies Development Authority meeting which started at 7:30, the letter came in, you handed the letter to the city clerk on Wednesday night after our budget session. I was in the process of developing of notes from the budget session, and I, and the mayor indicated that he would allow it, he allowed it. I said to Kelly, well, then we need to get this into the packet, because the packet was going out Thursday morning, and that letter came in, I did not review that letter until the afternoon, and at that time it was too late, the letter was in the packet.
Okay, and I will say also, Council Reynolds, I, I take some responsibility in accepting that as well, and it does point up a good reason, the ill-wound can blow some good, two things. One, all good points to consider in the letter as we go forward, and two, that's why there's a 12 o'clock rule, and I went ahead and broke it.
Good enough, fair enough, and I, and I obviously take responsibility for not having it in in time to...
And I apologize that I didn't get back too soon.
Council Dwyer? Fair enough.
Can I just, can I just make one correction? Our new Commissioner of Transportation is George Campbell.
Yep.
That is correct.
And I attempted to check that on the website and found the old commissioner's name still there, so. Lots of, all right, well then, if I may, what I'd like to do with all of you is share some information related to this topic, which is the safety of the Sagamore Creek Bridge. The letter is accurate in pointing out that it's a longstanding hazard for bicyclists in the seacoast. As I say, there's been numerous accidents, it's legion among, in the region. What I'd like to do is, is share with you, just so we can pass down or something, just so you can take a look, 330 signatures on a petition from, that, that the folks at Papa Wili's Bike Shop collected, asking that something be done about the Sagamore Creek Bridge. Since it's going to be replaced in a year or so, it would hopefully be possible to do something fairly inexpensive, in that we wouldn't have to make, you know, some long-term structural repair, but rather do something such as lightweight concrete or rubber mat or something to improve the safety. One of the primary reasons in addition to the longstanding safety hazard is that the East Coast Greenway is a project that you've probably heard of, we've gotten information before. It's being sort of formally unveiled this summer, passes through Portsmouth, passes along this route. And so it would be a very nice gesture, not just a gesture, but a very nice piece of substance if the city were to do something to remedy this situation in the near term. Again, if it's something that can be done for a fairly limited cost, so I'm, I'm not gonna make a motion, I'm not gonna make a formal ask, but rather share that information with you about 330 constituents from Portsmouth and surrounding area that are asking something be done. And I guess if I could ask the city manager for perhaps a report back as his thoughts about something we might do.
Your honor, quick question for Council Reynolds. When this, when the Greenway came through on Traffic and Safety Committee, it was told to us that the route was gonna come down Route 1B or 1A, going out to Newcastle, back through Rye, and then take a left out of there to continue on down to Odeon Point and not go across this bridge. Do you have, could you bring at the next meeting documentation to show that, that what the Greenway route that would go actually across this bridge? Because it was our understanding at Traffic and Safety that it was not gonna go across this bridge.
Uh, I'll certainly bring information back, I think it's worth noting that if, if in fact, you know, the actual route of the East Coast Greenway does go out 1B and skip the Sagamore Creek Bridge, that's about a five-mile loop, 1B out through Newcastle and back to Portsmouth. So in a practical sense, lots of people would opt not to do that. So I, I think it's fairly immaterial whether it's actually on the route or not, it's, it's a well-known route, especially for people that wanna ride down to the beaches from Rye, to Rye from Portsmouth, you don't go five miles around Newcastle to go there, you, you ride down 1A.
I, I just, I said, just, just the information that was brought to Traffic and Safety.
I'll certainly bring it back.
12 o'clock on Wednesday, any further comments, questions, motion to adjourn?
Second.